And shortly.
Amanda, I got recordings and we are recording.
Okay, so this is the August sixteenth twenty twenty two meeting of the Boulder Planning Board. And I'm calling it to order now. We have a full attendance of board. And so we can move ahead with with our meeting. The first item on the agenda is public participation. So if any member of the public wants to address planning board tonight, now is the time. And you can talk about anything except what we intend to hold a public hearing on tonight, which is the consideration of a recommendation on the capital improvement program for twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight. And I think before we move ahead, Brenda has the procedures that will be following tonight. Then Brenda, maybe you would like to go ahead on that?
Absolutely. And I apologize, I'll be looking over here to read from my other screen for you all. But we welcome you to tonight's meeting of the planning board and want to share these guidelines with you so that we can all be together in community and a productive atmosphere at tonight's meeting. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic dialogue. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, for staff, and for board members, as well as supporting democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experience, and political perspectives. If you'd like to learn more about this vision and how it was created with the community, we encourage you to go on our website, bouldercolorado.gov, use the search function to search productive atmospheres. And you will read more than you ever wanted to know about a public process. The following are examples of rules of decorum that are found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during tonight's meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to use the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted. And those are our guidelines. I am not yet seeing any hands raised. So just a reminder, should you like to speak for open comment tonight about anything that is not on the agenda, we encourage you to raise your hand using the raise hand function that can be found in your menu, usually at the bottom in your button that says reactions. So we are looking for raised hands to see if we have any comments.
Okay.
Not seeing any.
All right. Well, thank you, Brenda. We'll move ahead to a discussion of dispositions and call-ups and continuations. We have three items that are shown as call-up items for us to consider tonight. One is the final plat to subdivide properties at thirty four eighty five Stanford Court. The second is the floodplain development permit, FLD twenty twenty one dash zero 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 six eight on at sixteen hundred Commerce Street, which is a conditional letter of map provision for all aerospace. And the third is the floodplain development permit, FLD twenty twenty two dash zero 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 six six for twenty eight oh five Colby Drive, offense replacement in the conveyance and high hazard zones. So does anybody on the board have questions or comments or want to call any of these matters up? Seeing none, I am presuming that nobody wants to inquire or call any of these up. Oh, Lisa, is your hand raised? Oh, okay. All right. Then we'll move, then none of these are being called up by planning board and we'll move ahead to our next item, which is a public hearing item, which is a consideration of a recommendation to the city manager and city council on the recommended draft twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight capital improvement program. And I'll hand it over to staff to take off on this.
Chris, we can't hear you yet.
There we are. Does this look okay to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, let's jump in. Let me just move a couple of screens around here. Okay, so this agenda item is for the planning board to consider and provide a recommendation to city council on the recommended draft twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight capital improvement program. I'm joined this evening by Mark Wolf and Charlotte Husky, both from our central budget team. And we're also joined by many city staff representing nearly every city department who are here and available to field questions from the board. A quick rundown on the agenda. We'll start at the basics and provide some background information on the CIP, including some planning context. We'll discuss some major budget process changes that are being implemented this year before diving into the financial overview. From there, we'll provide the board with a key issues analysis before moving into the staff recommendation and next steps. So to start with the background and planning context, I'd like to start here with the key issues that the that the board should be considering this evening in their review of the CIP. So the first is to evaluate the proposed CIP in context with the BBCP or the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, Department Master Plans, Sub-Community and Area Plans. Make recommendations on the scope, priorities, and scheduling of CIP projects. Make recommendations on policy issues surrounding the design and location of projects. And finally, make recommendations on projects that should undergo a SEEP. And a SEEP stands for Community Environmental Assessment Process, which we'll provide the board a little bit more information on a little bit later on in the presentation. So starting from the basics, what is a CIP projects? CIP projects are any kind of major investment that the city makes requiring the expenditure of public funds for the purchase, construction, or replacement of the physical assets in the community. It should also be noted that capital projects are broken down by project type, which include capital maintenance and enhancement, new capital projects, capital planning studies, and land acquisitions. As you'll see a little bit later on in the presentation, the majority of our capital projects fall into the maintenance and enhancement categories, which demonstrates the investment the city has in taking care of its existing assets. So the CIP, or the full program, is a comprehensive six-year plan for the capital investment in maintaining and enhancing public infrastructure. It provides a forecast of funds available for capital projects and identifies all planned CIP projects and their estimated costs over a six-year period. Now, the CIP is aligned with and informed by many citywide plans and frameworks. The sustainability, equity, and resilience framework, which of course are the goals of our organization, form the basis for which the annual budget, including the CIP, is developed. Again, we'll touch on this a little bit later on in the presentation as we talk about some of the project highlights and budget changes that we've made. Now, of course, the BBCP is the overarching policy guide and is heavily used to inform policy, project, and programming decisions at the department master planning level and in the development of sub-community and area plans. So you see here, the majority of our capital projects and capital needs are actually identified within the department master plans, sub-community, or area plans. These processes include robust community conversations are developed to be consistent again with the BBCP and the seven goal areas of our organization. But they are also heavily informed by other citywide strategies and commitments, such as the racial equity plan and the climate commitment action plan. As the planning board knows, the planning board considers and provides a recommendation to city council on both department master plans as well as sub-community and area plans. And finally, the CIP. So as you can see by now, capital projects are heavily informed by many city plans and citywide goals. Ultimately, the CIP plays a key role in implementing the vision set forth in these department master plans, sub-community, or area plans. It also directly implements the broad policies and service standards that are identified in the BBCP. With that, I will hand it over to Mark Wolf and he will provide some overview on some of the budget process changes that we've had this year. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, planning board members. My name is Mark Wolf. I'm the senior budget manager for the city. Happy to join you. I'm gonna talk a bit about our typical budget cycle and then hand it off to Charlotte, who's gonna get into the details of the CIP. So just to set some groundwork here, I know there's some new planning board, new-ish planning board members. We have an annual budget cycle. It really is a cycle. We work with council in setting priorities at the beginning of each year and accordingly, we're do our budget planning and set department work plans through January and May. And we have an internal review team, which includes both reviewing our operating and capital budgets, present that to our internal executive budget review team, which eventually will spit out a recommended budget, which is coming here in another week and a half. So tonight, we're previewing the capital improvement portion of the the budget. And then just to note, when we do adopt a budget every year, CIP serves as a nice six-year guide for investments to help inform our work plans. But council is only appropriating or authorizing the spending of funds for our operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year and the and the one year of the CIP. So that would be twenty twenty three as we're talking about this evening. Next slide, please. So we're twelve months into what I would call an overhaul of our budget process. We have moved forward on implementing something called budgeting for community resilience, which was a report that we received a few years ago. I could talk about that for a long time. But bottom line is that there's some really great elements of that report that we're able to move forward this year. What we've done over the past twelve months is align our entire city budget around programs and projects, which will allow us to have an enhanced decision-making process throughout, not only internally, but but with council here over the next couple of months. One of the most important aspects of the process improvement is to develop our intended outcomes with our investments and begin to develop key performance indicators or KPIs. What you'll see most significantly in the change this year is how the budget looks. So instead of a massive three hundred and fifty-page PDF, which you'll see is the presentation in an online budget book environment called Boulder Open Gov. Open Gov is a software platform that will allow us to present the entire budget in a nice visual platform and allow community to drill down in a lot more detail than previously available. You'll get a snapshot of that information this evening. I'm also happy to show how it looks in the Open Gov environment. All of that will be released in a couple of weeks here on the twenty sixth of August. Next slide. Next slide, please. There we go. So just to touch on a couple items here, we have, we have seen in our budget development some early returns in our new budgeting process. We have been able to work with departments on ensuring the availability of resources for the core work. We have been able to reflect key investments in staff and positions across the city. You'll see some of that in planning and development services coming up and recommended operating budget. I've improved and enhanced expenditure forecasting. The easiest way to summarize this is that we're doing a better job in this budget in making sure that we're maximizing the use of our resources across the board in both operating and capital. And we're seeing new and exciting collaborations across departments and through our alignment with the CIP and operating budgets. This will allow us to better meet demand, but also approach problems in a different way perhaps than in the past. Next slide. And that all sounds like a lot, especially the development of measurements and making decisions based on those measurements. It is, and again, we're really twelve months into what we're thinking is about a three-year process to implement a more outcome-based approach. So in this first year, we've implemented Open Gov. That'll be a huge transparency tool for the community. In year two is when we'll really start working in detail on our measurements and establishing citywide KPIs. And by year three, we really hope that we're able to make decisions across the board based on our performance. And so we know that is a lot of work, but is really essential in keeping our commitment to the community with the resources that are in each budget. I think that's my last slide, and I get to hand it over to Charlotte Husky, who's a principal analyst, who will dive into what you're here to discuss this evening.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, planning board members. My name is Charlotte Husky. I am a principal budget analyst with the Budget Office with the City of Boulder and happy to provide a financial overview for you tonight. So we are forecasting with the twenty twenty three budget and moving forward as steady recovery and increase in sales and use tax revenue. We have used this to to balance our budgeting approach with the forecasted revenue projections, our twenty twenty three planned investments, as well as some mid-year investments and adjustments in twenty twenty two that we've made to support continued recovery after the pandemic, specifically focusing on the capital improvement program over the six-year period twenty twenty three to twenty eight. We are seeing within our CIP one hundred and fifty nine point eight million in new appropriation planned for twenty twenty three, seven hundred and forty five point seven million in planned spending over the six-year period to support over two hundred capital projects. One thing that we did want to highlight that's a difference from the CIP that was presented last year is that the community culture, resilience, and safety tax was not included in last year's CIP due to the renewal that was just approved by voters November of last year. This is now included within the twenty three to twenty eight CIP. Some significant projects that we'll highlight here are Fire Station Number Three with appropriation in twenty twenty three. The Twenty-Eighth Street and Thirtieth Street multimodal enhancements for the transportation, transportation capital projects, as well as the streetlight acquisition project where we are planning to acquire our our streetlights within the city of Boulder from XL. Next slide. I will provide an overview of the six-year CIP by department, by fund, and by project type. So the first slide is showing this breakdown of the six-year CIP by department. Within our six-year, within the six-year period, we have nine city departments that are managing capital projects over this period. The majority of which seventy percent, over seventy percent of the CIP is focused on utilities and transportation projects, and this is standard within each CIP annually that we see the majority of the projects falling within the utilities and transportation departments. I will point out here, you'll see a large slice of this in twenty twenty five is dedicated to facilities and fleet, and that is specific to the Western City Hub redevelopment, which I believe we'll talk about later in the presentation. Next slide. This is a breakdown of the CIP by fund. We have a mixture of over twenty city funds with various revenue sources supporting the city's capital projects. Again, here just highlighting the Utilities Enterprise, three enterprise funds, water, wastewater, and stormwater and flood funds, as well as the Transportation Special Revenue Fund, funding the majority of these projects over the six-year period. Next slide. And this is the breakdown by project type. So Chris highlighted this earlier. We have five capital project types, new facility, infrastructure, land acquisition, capital planning studies, capital maintenance, and capital enhancement. Over over eighty-five percent of planned spending is to support our capital enhancements and capital maintenance, again, just focusing on the funding that we are putting toward our existing assets. Toss it back to you, Chris.
Thanks, Charlotte. Sorry, guys, I'm having some mute issues. Okay, so we'll jump into the key issue number one, now that we have some context set about the financials behind the CIP and sort of the process that we've gone through to arrive to where we are today. So the first key issue that the planning board should be looking at here is the recommended draft, CIP, consistent with the goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, Department Master Plans, and Sub-Community and Area Plans. So staff does find that the list of projects presented and recommended in the draft CIP are consistent with the goals and policies identified in the BBCP, Department Master Plans, and Sub-Community and Area Plans. Now, we thought the best way to demonstrate this alignment was to actually spend some time and highlight a few specific projects within the list of recommended projects. And we'll start with the East Boulder Community Center retrofit renovations project. The East Boulder Community Center is the second-largest consumer of carbon in the city's building portfolio. The infrastructure is in dire need of repair or replacement, and the layout and program features are now out of date when contrasted with neighboring communities. The building itself, meaning the structure and form, is in good condition, making it an excellent candidate for building adaptation that through a holistic approach to renovating can serve the wants and the needs of the community for decades into the future. A deep energy retrofit retrofit will help bring this building into the forefront of modern energy usage and technologies. Renovations of the East Boulder Community Center also holds the potential to better serve the community in times of crisis in response to many threats from climate change. It is a community shelter from floods and wildfires and may in the future serve as a cooling center, disaster recovery center, and more. It is a key building to be considered when thinking about how to serve the community's resiliency needs over the next fifty years. Now, as you can see on the right, this project aligns with the goals of the Boulder Parks and Recreation Master Plan to modernize facilities and provide opportunities for community members to recreate and maintain a healthy and active lifestyle. It also aligns with the Facilities Master Plan, putting buildings on a path towards environmental sustainability, social responsibility, and financial stewardship. Key BBCP policies include those around climate action, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, energy-efficient building design, community connectivity and preparedness, health and well-being, and city parks and recreation. The next project we'd like to highlight is East Mapleton Ballfields. These ballfields are predominantly just that, baseball fields, and generally lack park amenities. This project will result in the addition of new amenities to the park near Boulder Junction. Connected by the underpass along Goose Creek, the thirtieth and Pearl area has increased in housing, resulting in more demand for neighborhood park and recreation amenities, such as playgrounds, dog parks, open lawn areas, and other multi-use amenities. A community planning project will be completed to determine the final design and priorities for construction. It should be noted that any reduction in ballfields will be replaced at other sports complexes as indicated in the twenty fifteen Athletic Field Study. The Transit Village Area Plan, or commonly referred to as Boulder Junction, indicates a goal of providing park and recreation amenities to this new residential area as development continues to occur. This project aligns with the six key themes of the Boulder Parks and Recreation Master Plan and implements several BBCP policies, including those around health and well-being, city parks and recreation, commitment to a walkable and accessible city, and city parks as gathering spaces. I do want to note that more example projects and department highlights are included in the staff memo and included in attachment B. So the second key issue that we'll go ahead and take a look at is, does the board have any recommendations on the scope, priorities, and scheduling of proposed CIP projects? And before diving in too deeply, I just want to remind the board, as we discussed a little bit earlier on in the presentation, that much of the scope, priority setting, and scheduling of capital projects is based on priorities and timing identified at the department master plan level or within a sub-community or an area plan. Now, as projects are scheduled into the CIP on an annual basis, obviously, not every capital request can be funded, meaning that additional prioritization has to occur and resources are allocated based on alignment with these city adopted city plans, but also the measurable impact on community goals, as Mark had alluded to. With that being said, we thought it would be good to continue demonstrating this alignment and highlighting a few additional projects. So Fire Station Three relocation and construction supports the relocation of Fire Station Three to a location that removes it from a one-hundred-year floodplain. Better situating the fire rescue department to serve growing call volumes and allow the department to build a modern station that can address system-wide capital deficiencies and support possible service enhancements into fire-based advanced life support. This project implements several areas of focus identified in the Boulder Fire Rescue Master Plan and implements several key policies of the BBCP, including those around safety, high-performing government, climate action, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, community connectivity and preparedness, as well as design excellence for public projects. To hit on a few transportation projects, over six point three million dollars in planned multi-use path capital maintenance and enhancement projects will support the accessibility and safety of the city's transportation system. The Thirty-Fifth Street Multimodal Path Project will fund upgrades such as raised separated bike lanes, wider sidewalks, and landscaping along Thirty-Fifth Street. The Twenty-Eighth Street Multimodal Project will improve accessibility and safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers at one of the city's main intersections at Twenty-Eighth Street and Colorado Avenue. These two projects help to achieve several key initiatives identified in the Transportation Master Plan and implement several key BBCP policies, including those around all mode transportation system and safe and complete streets, transportation system optimization, and accessibility and mobility for all. The third key issue, does the board have recommendations regarding policy issues raised by the proposed location and design of CIP projects? Staff has not identified any significant policy issues related to the design or location of any recommended CIP projects. Now, while we do not identify any policy issues, we did want to highlight how many department investment priorities will seek to reduce disparities for marginalized or underserved groups in the Boulder community. The Broadband Fiber Backbone Project will begin to address data connectivity challenges for underserved members of the community. Fire Station Three enhances the department's ability to respond to and conduct outreach to underserved populations living in North and Central Boulder. Continued investment in all city buildings by keeping systems functional and reducing downtime caused by breakdowns will ensure that these spaces continue to be available for those who wish to use them, including underserved and marginalized communities who may not have access to clean and safe spaces other than what the city provides through its public facilities. And finally, the construction of the North Boulder Library Ranch will expand services to an area bolder that previously only had access to one five hundred square foot corner library. Okay, key issue number four. Does the board have any recommendations on the CIP projects that will be required to undergo a community and environmental assessment process? You might be asking yourself, what exactly is a SEEP? Well, a SEEP is essentially an alternatives analysis. The purpose of a SEEP is to really assess potential impacts of conceptual project alternatives in order to inform the selection and refinement of a preferred alternative. Now, it should be noted that a SEEP is really one of three processes that may be identified for a major capital project. And here you see a summary of those three processes, a SEEP being the least common process that a project will go through. But for one, a project may go through concept plan and site, concept plan and site plan review for projects that will be prompted by the criteria established in the Boulder Revised Code. Some example projects include Fire Station Three, most recently the Boulder Reservoir Visitor Center and North Boulder Branch Library. I think the planning board will remember providing comments on all of these projects. Now, for project-specific community processes, these are for projects that have completed or are planning to complete a community process that is going to include impact studies and alternatives analysis. Some examples of this include the North Trail Study Area Implementation, South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation, and the Western City Hub Redevelopment, or also known as Alpine Balsam. These sets of projects have had very specific and in-depth community processes, impact studies, and alternative analysis is performed. With these types of projects, the requirements of a SEEP have been satisfied and would be considered a duplicative effort at this point. Now, for a SEEP, this is really the place for projects where alternatives Now, for a SEEP, this is really the place for projects where alternatives exist that will require community input, or for projects that could have significant impact on an environmental, social, or cultural resource. And if the project is anticipated to generate enough community controversy to require a public hearing or board review outside of a formal review process, such as a concept plan and site review. With that context, the following new projects to the CIP this year have been identified to undergo a SEEP. So for the Central Avenue Bridge Replacement, this will replace the existing vehicular and pedestrian bridges on Central Avenue over Dry Creek Number Two located in the Flatiron Business Park. The existing pedestrian bridge has failed, and the vehicular bridge is in poor condition. The structure will need to span the South Boulder Creek Floodplain while also maintaining existing driveway access to adjacent businesses. The new bridge will be a single-integrated multimodal structure that provides travel benefits for vehicles, transit, bicycles, and the pedestrian. Second project, Water Storage Tank Repair and Rehabilitation, addresses reinvestment in critical treated water infrastructure necessary to maintain out-of-hit water flow, pressure, and volume for firefighting and other emergency needs. Efforts in this six-year CIP cycle focus on the 100-year-old Chautauqua tank, the Kohler tank, and the additional water storage in East Boulder. And finally, the Boulder Reservoir Access Road. This will require major repair and maintenance at the Boulder Reservoir. This project was identified in the 2020 Boulder Reservoir South Shore Capital Strategy and Concept Plan, but given the increased recreation visitation to the reservoir and the addition of administrative functions at the fire training center, this project should be revisited and alternatives reconsidered to better reflect current uses of the sites. And with that, we will move into staff recommendation and next steps. Looking ahead, as Mark had alluded to, the official draft recommended budget will be released on August 26. September 8 will be the first city council study session of the recommended budget, and then we will go through the first and second reading a little bit later on in October. With that, the staff recommendation and suggested motion language this evening is, does the Planning Board recommend to the city manager and city council the recommended draft 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvement Program, including the list of CIP projects to undergo a community and environmental assessment process as identified in the staff memorandum? And with that, we're happy to take any clarifying questions. And when the time is appropriate, I'm happy to throw this back up so that board can kind of run down what the three key issues are. But with that, I will stop sharing, and we can open up for clarifying questions.
Thank you, Chris. Open it up to the board for questions. Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you. So, Chris, this was great. I feel like whatever new frameworks you've applied have made this a much easier document to absorb. So thank you for that. I have a bunch of questions, but I'll ask one, and then we'll make the rounds. This has to do with the construction of the North Boulder Library and how it intersects or would intersect with if the ballot measure to create a library district is approved. So what I want to understand, I have a, there's sort of some questions to this, so I'll just work my way through the questions. And first, I just don't remember what the cost of the construction of the North Boulder Library is, and I didn't see it in the packet. And the reason I ask that question is because if the ballot measure passes, does the city just hand that money over to whoever is in charge of the new library district? Like, I want to understand what that intersection is. If the library district ballot measure passes and construction has begun, does the city hand over the construction project in at whatever stage it is at and expect the library district to complete it? And I noticed in this, in this CIP, that there's a small amount of money, $1.5 million, for the park that's near the library or next to that new library. And I want to understand if that asset would also move to the library district if the ballot measure is approved.
Those are all great questions. Mark, do you want to chime in on some of those?
Yeah, and I see David Farnin, our library director, as well. From a budget standpoint, I can tell you that the capital project is expected to be completed in 2023, and the budget has already been appropriated for that. So that's why you don't see it in the CIP. Most of the other provisions are subject to negotiation if voters approve the district, and I'll let David expand on that.
Yeah, good evening, Planning Board. David Farnin, library director. Appreciate the questions. Silver, so the total cost for the construction of the building has not yet been determined because it's not complete, but it's roughly $12 million for the completion of the building itself. And we did have to make, you know, a number of cuts, and I assumed that question was coming up tonight, but not yet. So I just, to say, the building will be net zero ready. It will be solar compliant, and it will be more energy efficient than code requires. So anticipating that question, I want to get that out of the way. No decision has been made with regard to what the city decides to do with the property. So no, in the formation of a library district, should that be approved by the voters this fall, then the city council will need to appoint a board of trustees for a library district. They will then in turn sit down and discuss with that board of trustees what happens with the capital assets that the city owns, not just the North Boulder Library, but all of the libraries. And council has made it pretty clear that they're not interested in deeding the buildings to a library district. So my assumption is that the library district would lease the buildings back from the city at this point, although no decision has been made at this point. As far as completion of the project, I'll just reiterate what Mark said, and that is that the building, the funds have already been appropriated and are moments away from being encumbered. So for the cost of construction, which we anticipate, breaking ground is small. I hope that answers your question.
So the, thank you, thank you for that, David. The, just to follow up, so I want to make sure that I'm understanding if the district were to, if the ballot measure were to pass, there's still a city council process that has to take place that would determine the ownership or management of the physical assets that already exist. And is the intention that let's, again, it's just, I'm just trying to understand all the different ways this could go. If council were to say, we'll let you lease the building, but the building's only half completed, who is responsible for completing the building and who's paying for that?
Yeah, so any further, I mean, my understanding is that any further construction cost beyond what's currently identified and what we're having, putting out to bid would be the responsibility of a library district to fund any future, any future capital needs. But again, yeah, the ownership and who actually owns the buildings, that would be determined by, well, the city of Boulder currently owns them, but it would be a negotiation between the city of Boulder and the city council-appointed library board of trustees.
Okay.
And they have, so there was a recommendation on that earlier. At that point, city council indicated that they were not interested in deeding the buildings.
Okay, and the, and the park that surrounds it, that is, for which there is some money currently allocated for some refurbishment, does, I guess, is that area also would also be part of the city council library district discussion about ownership or responsibility? There's just like, there's like a $1.5 million figure in this CIP specifically for a park area that I'm not sure if it's in front of the library, you know, south of the library or north of the new library. So I'm just, I'm just curious if that's part of the, would be part of the city council library district conversation as well.
Yeah, so I see Jackson on the call. Jackson, did you have an answer to that question? Because I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if you're referring to Violet Park or the land on which.
I think I'm referring, I think it was called Violet Park. Thank you.
Which is, is there in the general vicinity, but not, not within, not with, not within the property.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, Violet Park would remain with the Parks and Recreation Department. This property was procured using Permanent Parks and Recreation Fund, so the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board would need to be involved with any discussions to dispose of it, but our intention is to keep that as a city of Boulder Parks and Recreation property.
Okay, thank you. That was my first and most important question. Thank you.
Okay, George. We can't hear you, George.
Sorry. Great presentation. Thanks. I'll try to do what Sarah did. Narrow my questions down to one specific topic, let everyone jump in on their round, and then circle back to other things. My question was about Alpine Balsam. And specifically, I see there's, you know, I see in the packet that there was unprecedented construction escalation, and the budget at least has escalated since the project was first acquired. And then there's some additional stuff in a different, in a different segment relative to project management outside of the, the main hub building, I think, is how that's structured. I guess my question is, does, do those numbers include staff time and all the other things that are going to take to get, you know, to have taken this project out of the ground? I guess, to ask it a different way, including like, you know, what happened with the Brenton Building, right? Because the Brenton Building was also part of that project. So it would be interesting to understand from the public's perspective and accountability of what we're actually spending as a city on this project in its entirety, because I'm seeing bits and pieces, but I don't know if I'm seeing the whole picture in this particular packet. So maybe we could answer that.
Sure. I'd actually love to have Michelle Crane or Joanna Crane from our Facilities Department come on and provide a little context. I see Michelle just popped up.
Good evening, Planning Board. I'm Michelle Crane, Facilities, our Capital Project Manager. So, great question. There's been a lot of bits and pieces since we acquired the property way back in 2015. And so the first project we went through was the Brenton Building renovation. What you're seeing in this CIP reflects probably our largest city capital investment, looking at the Western City Campus redevelopment, which is really the completion of the project and the renovation of the pavilion building, which is much larger than the Brenton Building. It's in the magnitude of somewhere to 70,000 to 100,000 square feet. It would also replace anywhere from seven to 10 current city buildings. And so there is a big trade in current unfunded capital infrastructure. So we're looking at those trade-offs as we look at the total project cost of the balance of that. But that's really what's reflective in this budget, the Western City Campus, is that construction project. And I think to answer one of your specific questions, that total budget that we're showing is reflective of what we call owner's budget. So it includes the soft costs, the construction costs, staff time, regulatory requirements. So those are the things that we look at and pull into a total budget. The other aspect that I think you're referring to with the Alpine Balsam implementation is the additional costs that we're looking at as we are building out the infrastructure on the site. So the flood mitigation, some of the horizontal connections that are going through the site, there's an renewal of 11th Street. And so that is the overall process and project management of that project that we're doing in partnership with BHP, but we're managing by and large the whole redevelopment of that project. And so that's how it's being broken into those two. The Western City Campus will be retained by the city and really replace and overcity buildings. Your question about the all-in price tag, you know, it is being developed in pieces. I think, you know, that can be assembled at the end of the project, but it really is being phased over those, those many pieces of time. So I hope that helped answer the question.
It did. I guess, from, from my perspective, and I think what I've heard a lot from the public is just, and I know we don't have all the parts and pieces, but, you know, hopefully as we get through it, right, to get transparency about what this actually costs us, because the costs seem significant. And, and what the, I guess, when we get there, a postmortem would be helpful to understand, you know, you know, the decisions and, you know, if we do it again, or if we, you know, take a step back on something like that the next time around. One other quick question, because it's just a quick one, not a big one, like a project like that. You had mentioned in the presentation that the East Boulder Community Center was the second-largest carbon user in our portfolio. What's the first?
I believe it's North Boulder Recreation Center. So our three recreation centers are at the top of the list, along with our public safety building. So I think North is the, is the front runner.
Got it. Thank you.
My who? Laura?
I will try to follow Sarah and George's good example and limit my questions to one, one topic for now. And that topic is the Boulder Municipal Airport Master Plan. Do we have staff from the airport here tonight?
We have staff from our Transportation Department here, Natalie Stifler. Natalie, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes. Hi, Natalie.
Hi there. I'm Natalie Stifler, the interim director of Transportation, and I'm happy to kind of give an update if that's what you're looking for as far as the master plan goes.
Well, I have some specific questions that may, may fit into an update. So my first question, just in the interest of time. So I'm looking at the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, the most recent update to the BBCP. And in section 6.23 for the municipal airport, the last line of that paragraph says, "At the time of the next airport master plan, the city will work with the community to reassess the potential for developing a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood-serving uses." And I'd like to understand more about how that is being built into the master plan process.
Sure. Yes, thanks. Yeah, so we've been thinking about this quite a bit and kind of determining how we'll proceed. And there's, the FAA requires a very specific master plan process. And, and the FAA isn't particularly excited about reimbursing the city for a study that would be looking at potentially reusing portions of the airport for other uses that would not be FAA uses. So we're looking at how can we essentially have that process occur adjacent to the master planning process, the FAA prescribed master planning process? So at this point, what we're looking at is probably kicking something off in Q1 of 2023 to begin that community conversation around what is the desired future use of the airport or portion of the airport? And so that conversation will get started in 2023. And then likely following that community conversation, then we'll go through the more prescribed FAA master planning process. Hopefully that's helpful. Does that make sense?
That is helpful, that it will be a bit of a parallel process because of FAA funding issues, which is completely fine. And so I was looking at the criteria for a SEEP that were presented by staff earlier. And those criteria being, "A project or potential alternative could have a significant impact on an environmental, social, or cultural resource, and the project would benefit from a SEEP." I, I'm not super familiar with SEPs, but that seems like a check the box in terms of the airport master planning considering devoting a portion of the property to housing and community-serving uses. Number two, the project is anticipated to generate enough neighborhood or community controversy to require a public hearing or board review. You know, knowing what we know about the community conversation that's happened so far around this idea, I would say that also for me is a check the box. Number three, there is more than one possible conceptual alternative that will, will require staff or community input in the selection. Again, for me, that's checking the box. I don't know about this fourth criteria as part of, the project requires alternatives analysis as part of an internal or external permitting and review process at the local, county, state, or federal level. I don't know about that one, but the other three seem to me to be a yes. And so I'm wondering if, I did not see the airport master planning process in the list of staff recommendations for projects that should undergo a SEEP. And I'm hoping we could talk a little bit about that, about the appropriateness for a SEEP.
Yeah, and I might lean on my colleagues, potentially Chris, for instance, here, you might be able to help chime in. I think my understanding of a SEEP is that you typically apply it to a more capital-like infrastructure project where the, the master plan and the community conversation that we want to have about the future of the airport is much more of like a planning conversation, a planning process. But certainly, Chris, jump in here if I've misspoken. Thanks.
Yeah, I know, Natalie, I think you're, you're right on. SEPs are really good for specific infrastructure-related projects that don't have a process already identified either through a site SEPs are really good for specific infrastructure related projects that don't have a process already identified either through a site plan or a concept review or through a project specific community process. And so I imagine that going through this process at the, at the airport, we would have our own specific community process being the update to the, to the airport master plan. There could certainly be capital projects within that work that are identified as part of that planning process that when they start to find their way into the, into the CIP on an annual basis, then those specific projects potentially at the airport could qualify for a SEEP. But it's, it's really meant to be a more specific process really that's replacing either a site plan or a concept review if the criteria is not met in that situation. Hopefully that helps, helps clarify a little bit.
It does. And, you know, I work in planning and policy. And so I can understand that maybe that particular process doesn't map very well onto this, working with the community to reassess the potential for developing a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood serving uses. I do hope that that will be a very robust alternatives analysis. Looking forward to seeing how you conduct that conversation. I did have one other question, and that is around the city's use of the racial equity instrument, which is meant to, you know, measure and help the city think about the racial impacts, racial equity impacts of, I would think, precisely this kind of decision of how that land is used, a major land use investment by the city of Boulder. And should that be an airport or should that potentially be housing and neighborhood serving uses? Has the city considered using this racial equity instrument for that piece of the decision making process? And I just want to preface this also by saying, you know, the, I have read some of the news coverage about the city's use of this racial equity instrument. And it sounds like oftentimes it is not used because the process didn't plan for it in advance. They didn't budget for it. They didn't plan it into the process. And so I'm hoping that we can talk a little bit about the appropriateness of using this instrument and maybe think about, is that already included in your budget? And if not, do we need to increase the budget for this project to accommodate that? Because I think that, you know, in, in my, one person's opinion, but this seems like a, a perfect case for using that instrument.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that question. And we'll certainly be building that into the engagement process and the planning process for the airport conversation. And we, we really, you know, to be honest, we have not gotten to the point of scoping the whole project. So, but that will be an integral piece of it. And yeah, and I think, you know, from my perspective, we're really trying to be intentional about using that racial equity instrument in our other planning processes within the transportation department. Our, the core arterial network that I'm sure folks have heard about, we're being very intentional about incorporating that into our timeline and, you know, our, the resource needs for that work. And we'll continue to do that with the airport as well.
Thank you. And one last question on the same topic. I, I really appreciated in the presentation and staff talking about the way that this, a lot of the projects that the city has considered are really designed to, you know, further Boulder's climate action goals, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And I'm again wondering, I hear you saying you haven't really scoped this process, but, but for this piece about, you know, having the conversation about potentially devoting a piece of the airport to housing and community neighborhood serving uses. Have you thought about how the climate impacts of the various alternatives might be studied?
You know, I have not. I think that will certainly be a piece of it. And, and I'll take that back to the team and we'll certainly think about how that can be incorporated into the overall process.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Okay, Mike, Mike, what, everyone's been asking these big questions and mine are kind of minor mundane, but so maybe I'll get done really quickly. But since Natalie's still on the screen, I, I'll ask my bridge question first. The, the Flatirons Industrial Park Bridge over Dry Creek. Has that bridge been rated on our sufficiency scale?
That is a great question, Mark, and one that I, is a little too detailed for me to be able to answer, but I certainly can take that back to the team and, and we can follow up with a response.
Okay. Has, do you know the nature of the pedestrian bridge failure? Lack of maintenance or just salt or what, what, do you have any idea what has caused the pedestrian bridge to be so poor in such poor condition that we've closed it?
You know, Garrett would have that answer. If he were here tonight, he's on vacation and I'm helping cover. So that, we can get that information to you on both the, the, the rating and kind of what caused the deterioration.
All right. And then finally, on, on that bridge. In my time on TAB, we participated in a SEEP or two now and again, and I, I found them to be helpful. And I appreciate Laura's questions about using a SEEP for an evaluation of the airport master plan. I, I find this particular, it's kind of small bridge in the industrial park. I, I find it a little odd to be chosen out of all the projects to be, to apply a SEEP to this. Can you tell me, can anyone tell me why this versus other bridges versus other transportation projects? I'm just curious why, why this one in particular rang out as being in need of a SEEP.
Yeah, I can take, or Chris, do you want to take, do you want to take this one? That'd be great.
You know, Mark, I think if I remember correctly, so we have an internal staff team, upper levels, project managers, CIP managers who meet on an annual basis. In fact, we met three weeks ago to review the full list of projects and identify which ones we think a staff should be moved forward for, for a SEEP. And this one popped up, and I think it was really related to that it's in a flood plain and it's also has sensitive habitat directly underneath it through Dry Creek number two. And so if you remember that criteria that we're looking at with SEEP, one of those is potential environmental impacts. And so while there may not be a ton of alternatives that exist as far as alignment with this pedestrian bridge or within the actual, you know, vehicular bridge that crosses Dry Creek number two. But we do think that there could be some environmental impacts that we'll want to take a look at. And it's not a project that would trigger concept plan and site plan review. And so this is a good example of where we come in with a SEEP to help take make sure that we're looking at all of the environmental impacts. If there are alternatives that exist, those are also getting looked at, but it really had to do with what it's crossing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I, I have another small one on for Parks and Rec and, and in disclosure. So as I, as I read through the the whole CIP, I, I, I looked and I was struck by the fact that the downtown mall refresh and redo was under, falling under Parks and Rec and paid for by Parks and Rec. And we just went through the Parks and Rec master plan. And I thought, this is, you know, this is a really commercial area, et cetera. So I actually talked to Director Rhodes of this late this afternoon. But I think it's important to note, and so I'll ask the question and then staff can answer it. But I think it's important to note for all of us. What is the funding source for the downtown mall refresh? And how is that different than other Parks and Rec funding?
I'm happy to take that. I'm sorry to introduce myself earlier. I'm Jackson Height, Senior Manager for Business Services and Parks and Rec. The mall refresh, the $500,000 indicated in the CIP is for the design work. And this is funded out of the CCRS funding that was approved by voters last November. So CCRS is
Just again, for the community.
Community culture, resilience, and safety tax. So that's what we'll fund it. No dedicated BPR funds.
Okay, great. All right. I'll hold my last question and let other people take around. Thank, thank you both.
Okay. ML, I think, I see your hand is up.
I think Sarah had her hand up before me, but I'm happy to go next. Thanks, John. So I, I have a question. I'm going to come back around to the Alpine Balsam project. And it's unclear in looking at the information, it's unclear. So we've got the main hospital, which has been in a deconstruction phase for gosh, five, six, a long time. And then you were talking about, so there's a building that has already been refurbished and is in use. And then you're talking about the Pavilion. It sounds like you're talking about the Pavilion as being the focus of this funding. Can you talk about the big deconstruction project that's going on relative to these budget numbers? And some of the other buildings at the Alpine Balsam, like the Pavilion, it sounds like the Pavilion is what's I'm confused. Sorry.
Let me see if I can try to bring a little clarity and, and please jump in with any more questions. So the city purchased an 8.8 acre site, the most of which was a large hospital on the kind of northern end of the site. And then there, south of Alpine, there is an independent Brenton Building, which is what was brought up. And then a parking structure. So on the northern side, that the main site, we have a hospital that I think was roughly 300,000 square feet. It is attached on two sides to what we call the Pavilion Building. So for all intensive purposes, it looks like one building. But they're really not the same building. They're, they're actually separate buildings, separate structures. And so we went through a really long reuse analysis of both the hospital and the Pavilion Building several years ago. It was determined to deconstruct sustainably the hospital, which you're right, has been in deconstruction for a while. We've completely deconstructed the interior. And we are now actually mobilizing this week on deconstruction of the exterior. So by early next year, that building should be down. What will remain standing is what we're calling the Pavilion Building, which is currently about 70,000 square feet. So still a four story structure. It's an L shaped building on the corner of Alpine and Broadway. And our reuse analysis suggested that that was really a prime building for reuse. It's a concrete structure. So it really is a preserved embodied energy to reuse that structure. We would never build a concrete building like that. And it's got a good form to get daylight in from different sides. And it really would help consolidate a number of city buildings currently in the civic area that have been identified to either be deconstructed because they're in the high hazard flood plain. Or they're just, we've got scattered buildings around that have large unfunded infrastructure needs. And so consolidation through a lot of process through the Alpine Balsam area planning process really identified this is a good consolidation of buildings and reuse of the structure and bringing together city services to this one site. So it is a major infrastructure project and really deep energy retrofit and new building that we're, we're looking to come out with. It would complete what we're calling the Western City Campus, which would be this collection of buildings on this corner of the site. Does that help at all?
Yes, that does. And I kept seeing that term, the Western City Campus, thinking, I don't think I've seen that term before. What is, what are they talking about? So I'm understanding then that the Alpine Balsam overall project, you're looking at, this is looking at while the hospital per se is becoming deconstructed, you're looking at the reuse options. And that's where the funding is going because I think the deconstruction came out of a prior. Is that from a prior budget? So it's not in this? Okay.
That's right.
That makes sense. So, yeah. So then when the hospital is deconstruction, deconstructed, then you can go into the whole housing and other, other benefits parts. But in the meantime, you'll get the, the staff relocated to these refurbished buildings.
Yeah. So we're looking to renovate that, that large Pavilion Building for staff. And then the other parcel, yeah, would go to housing. And we've got to clear the hospital for those things to happen for a new road and access. Yeah.
Right. Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate your, your answer. And it really was a very nice presentation, very clear. You know, identifying. And I was thinking, okay, maybe we should have the Alpine Balsam site have been one of the little examples, but I see why, why it was. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I see others have their hands up, but I'd like to get a question in also in this rotation. And that is a, a pretty quick one. And it's similar to the issue that Sarah raised with the libraries. And this concerns the CU South referendum. And I'm trying to understand how the costs associated with the proposed purchase and flood plain mitigation work on the CU South property shows up here and how the fact that there'll be a referendum on that is reflected in, in what shows up here.
Thanks, John, for the question. I'm actually going to pass that off to Chris DuBelle. He's one of our executive directors. Deputy directors in our utilities department. Can you provide some context on, on CU South?
Good evening, planning board. Yeah, Christopher, the Deputy Director for Utilities of Operations. And John, just to clarify what I heard, you, you inquired about costs associated with, with the South Border Creek flood mitigation efforts. And so I could definitely share about that. And then you, you had a comment about the referendum. I just want to be clear what, what you, what your question was there.
Yeah. So my, I was interested in all the costs associated with that, including the purchase of land from, from CU for city open space purposes as well. And, and as, as you may be aware, there, there's a question of whether whether the city should proceed with the CU South project under its existing arrangements with CU that will be dealt with in the upcoming election. And I suppose the outcome of, of that vote could have an impact on on the funding and the activities being used there. And so I'm just interested to see how that's being dealt with in the CIP.
Sounds good. I, I think I do understand now. And I'll just share a little bit and then we can further clarify. So we, we're in what we refer to as phase one of the South Border Creek Flood Mitigation Project. And we've been, been utilizing funds and monies for basically the preliminary design. And we're, we're essentially at that 30% design level currently. What, what you and the board are seeing in the recommended CIP is to advance that project through the, the detailed design phases. So next year in 2023, we have $3 million recommended to continue that design effort and get the project to, to a final design status. And then the larger money is showing up in 2024. And that would fund the, the actual construction efforts. And it would be multi-year, of course, but we just show all the money in one year, one single year. And that's currently cost estimated at $63 million. But it would span again multiple years. So that's, that's what we have in front of you for, for funding. Yeah, I, I am aware of the referendum and the, the November election, the ballot issue. So we're, we're proceeding as if the annexation agreement remains in place and per council direction to advance this, this important and critical work for South Border Creek Flood Mitigation. If the referendum vote would change that, we're going to have to revisit what we're able to do. Because right now, yeah, as, as we're progressing through the, the design, the flood benefits of the 100 year mitigation do require the property that's used, CU currently owns to, to make that flood project work.
Okay. Well, that was a clear answer. Thank you. Sarah?
So first a comment, which is a follow up ML and then a question. So I beg, I beg staff to stop calling Alpine Boston, the Western City Campus. It's a terrible name. And it makes me feel like the name of our town is Western City. Just something else. I don't care what you call it, but Western City Campus just is like, I mean, I realize it's because there's an East Campus. But then let's call it West City Campus or something. Okay, that's my comment. On page 12 of this On page twelve of this agenda item, there's a throwaway mention of something called the Affordable Commercial Capital Program. I have no idea what that is. Is it the next iteration of a discussion around community benefits and affordable commercial space or something? What is that? What is that project?
It's Chris Jones on the call. If not, I think Mark Wolf may be able to provide a little context around this.
Yeah, I thought I saw Chris, but I'm happy to start crossover knowledge. Chris used to be in Community Vitality. I believe that's a leftover from a district. So for the central area, commercial district program specifically related to the district owned spaces, but I'll let Chris expand.
And sorry, I was multitasking. I, I want to make sure I got the question for this is related to the affordable commercial.
Yeah.
Dollars.
Yeah, the Affordable Commercial Capital Program. I just didn't know what that was.
Yeah, so we do have dollars that have been identified for an affordable commercial, the development of an affordable commercial program in Cajun and specifically we've been targeting Cajun owned retail spaces. We currently have them all occupied. Fortunately, we have them leased out and we have been targeting specific types of businesses. And we actually also have Teresa Pinkel on the call as well and she's working with our property managers CBRE to make sure that we're filling the city owned spaces with businesses that fit our criteria. And so we want to be targeting these resources that we have available for the development of a future affordable commercial program as that's been the appetite of council and planning board and others for some time now. And so we are planning future work in that area. Teresa, do you have anything else you want to add in that regard?
No, another, not only do we have, I guess not to add anything else to that per se, but it is something that we're looking at taking a more concerted effort and dive into in twenty twenty-three.
So can I just, I appreciate that. Can I just follow up? So right now it's focused on city owned spots within Cajun. And is there a discussion of, I don't know where other city owned buildings are, but are there city owned buildings outside of Cajun?
The city does have a number of spaces that we lease. The, the capital dollars are caged funds. So they are, they're property taxes that are paid for by businesses within the district. And so we'd want to make sure that the Affordable Commercial Program that's using Cajun dollars benefits yeah, businesses within the district.
And is there, and this is way out of the CIP discussion, but is there any? Are you all looking at this as a model for expansion to address the commercial affordability challenge?
Correct. That would be the intent is use these resources to model something within Cajun and, and learn from it and then perhaps expand it to future projects.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Mark.
Thank you.
John, Mark.
Okay. Okay, all right, I'll go quick. On the East Boulder Community Center, I, I really appreciate the fact that we are doing a deep refresh reconstruction, energy improvement, rather than tear the building down and, and start over. And so I appreciate that. Is anyone here tonight able to really describe? Are we using ground source heat pumps to heat the pool? Are we additional solar? What, what is really going into this that into this expenditure and what will the end result look like?
I can, I can take that question. Our team, our facilities group is actually doing a full scoping of the project this year. And that's really in anticipation of getting more into the design formally next year. So regarding the energy aspects of the project, back in twenty eighteen, we did an analysis, a holistic kind of building assessment and identified a number of energy conservation measures. So where the building was performing well versus where it really needed improvements. And of course, one of those is to try to convert to an all electric building and then reduce our energy use intensity. Some of the things that we're looking at on the project specifically is some pretty extensive envelope improvements. So the first thing you can do is really enhance your envelope. The glazing is old in that building and there's a lot of room to kind of seal the envelope up. So that's a big consideration. And then is it pertains to the pools, which are really one of the biggest sources of where energy use goes is to kind of heat those pools. One thing that we're considering and looking a lot into is heat recovery. So from the sewer system. And so working with our utilities to actually draw the energy out of the waste heat recovery out of that sewer system to look at getting off natural gas and using that as a source to heat and kind of keep our pools. And so that's a big element of the project, but really at the moment, we're doing a full scoping of code versus net zero. Whatever, what's, you know, the biggest the project might want to be, what's, you know, the smallest to me codes and that's our full scoping that we're doing this year.
Great, thank you. That's it, John. Thanks.
Okay, George.
Oh, thanks. I've written my question down here. East Mapleton Ballfields. It was interesting, the justification I was used in the proposal relative to this improvement had to do with the increasing population around this area. My question is, when these projects were first conceptualized, were these budget dollars for these types of improvements put in because they were a natural extension of what the increase in population would be for Boulder Junction? So how is that conveyed to the public when that was put forth?
Jackson.
I'm going to do my best to answer this, George. The Boulder Junction Capital Improvement Fund is intended to, is a boundary that all of the property owners have paid into. And those are the dollars that will be used for the East Mapleton Ballfield. So it really is an access to that community and the benefits they'll be receiving based on the increased commercial activity that's occurred over the past few years.
Oh, so that, that's great to understand. So that, that money is coming from a fund that's being generated from that project's development?
Yes, I'm blinking on the exact boundaries, but it's roughly thirtieth to foothills and Valmont over to Walnut, more or less. So any of the new construction dollars within that area is going to fund that project.
That's great to understand. And then on a similar vein, which just to clarify, the central, the, the, the bridge that Mark was talking about earlier, that's not in the CIP that's been identified for the, a follow-up CIP, correct?
It's included in this year's CIP. I'm not sure what the actual funding year is.
Okay.
But no, it is included in this CIP. I don't know that.
Where do the funds come from for that? Does that come from the business part? Is there, is there some kind of taxation mechanism that comes from the business park?
I'm assuming it's city right of way. Natalie, let's see. I'm not sure if we're able to identify where the funding source is coming from off the top of my.
Yeah, I don't have that.
The reason, the reason I ask and you can get back to me later is obviously that business park just transacted for an astronomical number. And my question is the utility of that. And, and I, and I don't have, I don't have a mastery of where that is and who uses it and how it's used. Just so I'm trying to understand as it relates to a bridge that's servicing that area. There, there's a lot of benefit being derived by, by others through that. And I just want to make sure that the funds that we're pulling from are actually coming from the people that are deriving benefit and not necessarily just the, you know, city slush fund.
Mark or Charlotte, do you guys happen to have access to the funding source on that project? If not, George, we can follow up.
Yeah, no, no problem. It's not, not, not important to get back to me right now if you don't have information on it, but that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, ML.
Yes, thank you, John. I have, I'm following up on direct centers. If, so North Boulder Rec Center was the kind of number one environmental, in need of an environmental upgrade. Can you explain why East is getting the deep retrofit? And I heard you talk about it. You know, as, as a focus in a key place for, you know, other uses in the bigger communities such as it becomes a place for people to go when there's evacuated from a fire and that kind of thing. What was, how, how do those decisions get made? If we know what the number one is and yet we're going to pick the number two, how, how does it? I'm not sure who I'm looking at for the question. Michelle, thank you.
Thanks. I'm happy to jump in in part. And of course I want to turn to our Parks and Rec folks as well. So East and North run pretty close from an energy use intensity and kind of greenhouse gas emissions standpoint as far as, you know, their emissions. So they're both really quite high on our list as a priority to address in the system. Either one of them will make a significant reduction across our entire facility portfolio towards, you know, meeting our climate commitments. One of the biggest reasons that East was a focus is because of the Natatorium project and the Natatorium renovation. That was really the focus of, I think, the community's desire. And I think that was, came out of, and I'll look to Parks on this, but their work in the community was wanting to first address the Natatorium and, and the pool refresh. We have recently did that pool refresh and made some improvements in North. We just at the time didn't really address the full kind of energy loads of the pool. We didn't have the solutions at the time when we did that Natatorium refresh at North. And so when that opportunity came up to look at the pools and that refresh that the community wanted from a program and service level, it really is the opportune time to look at a building holistically. You've got a big construction crew, you're, you're banging and, and doing all this renovation. It's the time to make a holistic improvement and, and to make your money kind of go the furthest and improve that building. So we really expanded, I think, that community's desire. That was part of the CCRA's tax and, and that Natatorium project. Jackson, I don't know if you want to add more to that.
The only thing I'll add is the twenty seventeen aquatics feasibility study identified the East Leisure Pool as being next in line for upgrading. Just based on usage and that is a rather large facility that serves the eastern side of the city that it made a lot of sense to update that timing. North had its last major refresh on in twenty eighteen, I believe. So that's my answer.
Got it. And I think I heard you say that you didn't have the strategy about reclaiming the heat from the waste system when North got refurbished. And so that's kind of technology that you'll be applying at South that wasn't, that wasn't on the radar for North. Is that, did I understand that correct?
Yeah, sorry, my internet froze a little bit, so I missed the front end of the question. But I think talking about that opportunity after the waste heat, we're happy to look at the pools. So in particular, East is an opportunity because we have a main sewer line that runs adjacent and close by. And you know, if you think about the city, you collect from the west and you move further east and is that that system grows, you have a larger opportunity. I don't, I think we have to look at where North and even South may or may not have that, but we are looking with our partner departments on different opportunities to convert from natural gas systems to heat the pools to other kind of technology. East is primed to take a look at this particular technology.
Excellent. I, I super appreciate the process that you just described. But it, it's just, it's just brilliant that you're looking at. We're going to do a really great job with what we can, what we have here. Because we have this proximity of this waste pipe, we have this, you know, pool in need of a, I mean, I, I think the process has been well applied in a, in a holistic manner. And I applaud you guys for that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? All right, I think at that point, now we can move ahead to the public comment participation section. Do we have any? I'm just thinking, Brenda, you, you're probably best suited to run this section. Do we have any people wishing to speak? Now's the time.
Hey Brenda, you're muted.
Thanks, Chris. We do have one hand up at the moment. And we'll remind folks that now is the time to use your raised hand function that you'll see on the menu at the bottom of your screen. If you don't see it, you might look in your reactions button if you have one and you might find it there. But at this point, if Amanda will bring up the timer, we can go with our first speaker, who is Sam Weaver.
Very good.
And you should be able to unmute now, Sam.
I can. Can you hear me? Very good. Well, thank you all. I can't see a timer, but I'll shoot for two minutes one way or the other. I get three minutes. Fantastic. So my name is Sam Weaver. I'm a former planning board member and then years on city council, the last two as mayor. And I want to thank you for taking the time to hear me out and thank you also for your service on planning board. I know what it means. So thank you. Finally, I'll say I was a volunteer fire chief for a couple of years after fifteen years serving on a volunteer fire department. So I'm here tonight to testify and support a public safety infrastructure. And I see lots of good things in this CIP that I like around that. I want to say the transportation system improvements, the thirtieth street protected bike lanes and twenty-eighth and Colorado intersection improvements are quite welcome. And then fire and emergency services, fire station number three, the move of that will form the basis for bringing advanced life support to the fire service in Boulder. Also near and dear to my heart, I think most people in Boulder expect that paramedics are the first people who arrive and that is not necessarily true, but this will be one step in getting us to that. I also see in here some flood control projects. I see ten million dollars for Gregory Creek flood mitigation. Twenty-five million for Upper Gruce Creek flood mitigation and sixty-six million for South Boulder Creek flood mitigation, including twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And so I want to also support and speak in favor of all three of those. And in particular, I'm here tonight because there is going to be a referendum on the CU South annexation, which is absolutely a requirement in order for us to do the South Boulder Creek flood mitigation project. So I'll put in a plug for the community to vote no on the referendum so that this project moves forward. And I'll say here are some of the benefits that I see from that South Boulder Creek flood mitigation project. It will protect twenty-three hundred downstream residents. And it has citywide protection because it will protect both US thirty-six and foothills Parkway in the event of a flood and will allow evacuation as well as emergency response along those two major arterials. And it will delay or prevent the overtopping flash flood which occurred in twenty thirteen. And I will say that this project has just hit its thirty percent design completion point. So to Chairman Gerstl's point, there will be a referendum, but when council voted six to one to proceed with this annexation, we passed that on emergency because we did want planning to continue on this project. So at the end of the day, I think the CU South annexation is a benefit and the main and first benefit will be the flood mitigation project. We've had two flash flood warnings in southeast Boulder in the last month. One of those rainstorms really negatively affected the NEST project, which is a low income housing project. So I know my time's up, but I'll say please recommend to council that they pass this CIP, especially with the public safety projects in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see one other hand at the moment, Kathy Joyner. Kathy, you should be able to unmute now.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Joyner. I'm a member of the South Boulder Creek Action Group, which has been advocating for flood mitigation I'm a member of the South Boulder Creek Action Group, which has been advocating for flood mitigation for almost nine years since the 2013 floods. And this is related to South Boulder Creek. I urge you to recommend the approval of the CIP to council and the city manager, which would move the South Boulder Creek Flood Protection Project one step closer to completion. When the floodwaters overtopped US 36, creating a flash flood situation in 2013. None of us could have imagined what was about to happen to our homes or to our lives. Speaking as only one of many residents affected, I had nine feet of water in my house on Koala Drive. To this day, almost nine years later, many of my neighbors have not felt confident enough to restore their properties to pre-flood condition. Even more significant consideration is the risk to human life when one of these events occurs. And as we know, this type of significant flooding of South Boulder Creek has occurred repeatedly in the past and will again. Evacuation and access to the area is almost impossible in one of these events. And major highways, in this case, US 36 and Foothills are rendered impassable. The continuing danger this leaves residents in is known and significant. After years of hard work by the city, significant progress is being made in mitigating the potential for devastating future impacts to residents' safety and property. There are thousands of people currently living at risk of South Boulder Creek flooding. And your favorable recommendation regarding the CIP to council and the city manager would be most appreciated by all of us. I would also encourage people to vote no on the referendum to repeal annexation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any further hands at this time. Oh, we do have one more hand. Lynn Siegel. And you should be able to unmute now.
Yeah, vote yes on the referendum. The disturbing fact that Sam Weaver was actually the one who came on the one day I was out of town, the one week I went to San Valley. It was no snow, so it was pretty depressing. But in any case. He voted against the planning board and the planning board's recommendation to city council and city council for a five hundred year floodplain. And this was a directive. To staff. In a study session, which is. Completely unconscionable. So. Whatever he says. Think twice. Think about February 24th, 2020. And what he did. That. Caused wrecked major havoc. In this city. Now. I think what you need after this discussion tonight and all these expenses. You need a SEEP on CU South. And you need more than anything. Population management. Before you pass any CIPs for all these expenses. Georgie brought it up. I don't think the question was really answered adequately. About how? How these things get funded according to potential popu- population demand rather than, you know. What? What we know already exists in the population. CU South is a disaster. For this city. Pure disaster. You know, Boulder is not a subsidiary of CU. And I love CU. I just had a guy come, an aerospace engineering 22 year old, just gave a talk his first presentation last weekend. Logan, Utah, you know, I love CU. My dad went to CU. My brother went to CU, my son went to CU. But this is too much of a good thing. And we need to remember what. Gilbert White said. And how Gilbert White studied population. The 100 year floodplain was. Switched with a fire station. Ironically, Sam Weaver worked in the fire, you know, it's so, I can't, I wish I could get into his brain. It doesn't make sense what he says and what he's done and what he knows. They went out of the 100 year floodplain. Now we're supposed to go. And put 100 year floodplain in CU South? And hand over? City land for that?
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Okay, do we have any other?
We do not have other members of the public who've joined us tonight, so I believe all the members of the public who are with us have had their chance to speak.
Okay, very good. I think we can bring it back to the board now for discussion. Open it up. Sarah? Go ahead.
Can we just take a five minute break?
Oh, sure. Let's, it's now 7:36, let's come back at 7:45.
And John, when we do open it up for a board discussion, should we frame it in terms of those key questions that staff have asked, those four questions?
Yes, I think I was going to raise that, but maybe you can do it when we come back.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy for you to raise it, John, as the chair.
Lisa, how old is your little boy now? How old is your little boy now?
Uh, he's 13 months.
My God, he is so cute. He's just so cute.
He's trying to go to bed and not wanting to right now.
I understand. If you could just show him at every meeting for a couple minutes. Move him across the.
Do you still have your loner cat?
I do, I, the loner cat is currently asleep on the couch over there. She got tired.
Can't disturb the sleeping cat, yeah.
She'll start walking on my laptop and. So better she's over there. But she did spend a few minutes watching the planning board before she gave up.
And then she found it, yeah, soporific and. Fair enough.
That might be the first time I've heard the word soporific in casual conversation and I am loving it. Thank you.
I, I am, and this is not the case tonight, I'm drinking herbal tea at the moment. But I tend to, my vocabulary expands if we ever get to see each other in person and get to go to a brewery or something. I stopped self-editing and it starts getting ridiculous. You would enjoy it.
I would like to go to a party with you, Lisa. We have to have like a planning board party.
Okay, to be discussed under matters, I think.
After the retreat, you know, well, yeah.
Okay, let's come back to session here and. And talk about the, the capital investment program. So staff has identified four key issues for us to think about in making our recommendation. And I think there, it's very useful to, to frame our comments and along those four key issues. The first is whether the. The CIP is consistent with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. The second is whether the board has any recommendations on the scope, priorities and scheduling of these projects. The third is whether the board has any recommendations regarding policy issues. Raised by the proposed location and design of CIP projects. And finally, whether the board has any recommendations for projects that should be required to undergo a community environmental assessment process. So. I think those are useful ways to frame our comments and I'll be interested to hear what, what your thoughts are. Anyone want to lead us off here? Such silence. Laura?
Sure, I will.
Hey, I'm sorry, just before a process thing, could, could we throw that up on the screen so it would help to just keep our thoughts together?
On it.
That's an excellent idea. Set, okay. Coming shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes.
So my thoughts are, number one, I do think that the recommended 2023 to 2028 CIP. Is consistent with the goals and policies of the BBCP, the sub-community plans and the master plans. Great job, staff. I love everything that's in this CIP. Number two is where I do have some input and, and for this, I just want to summarize my comments about the airport. So number two is, does the board have any recommendations on the scope, priorities and scheduling of the CIP projects? So my comments have to do with the scope and scheduling of the airport master plan. So for scope, you know, I, I can get on board with this idea that the piece that is in the 2020 update of the BBCP. That says that the city will work with the community to reassess the potential for developing a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood serving uses. That that will be a bit of a separate item. And I think that might actually be a good thing in terms of sequencing. Because I think that this master planning process needs to assume that there is not a foregone conclusion. And it needs to assess alternatives. And some of those alternatives might involve significant change. You know, one of the possibilities that has been raised in the past is that the footprint of the airport would be shrunk to primarily what is needed for emergency services. That go through the airport. And I think that needs to be one of the alternatives that is considered in this master planning process. And so if that means that. This little chunk that's broken off needs to be sequenced first before you go into that FAA master planning process, if that makes sense. Then that should be considered. Now, there may be pieces of the FAA master planning process that you can do in parallel. I leave that up to staff's judgment. As long as, you know, we're not sinking money into a master planning process that would be inconsistent with some of the possible outcomes. From this other little chunk that is being broken out from the FAA process. So that's my comment on sequencing. And then in terms of scope, you know, I will trust staff's judgment on whether the SEEP is the right instrument to use. But I do think that this is a significant community decision that needs significant community input. And a community environmental. What does SEEP stand for? Environmental and Community Assessment Process. So maybe it's not a SEEP in particular, but for the community piece, I think we do need to use the racial equity instrument. And for the environmental assessment piece, I think we do need to look at the, the climate impacts and compare the alternative of no change. You know, the airport kind of continues as, as it is now versus potentially significant change as, as I talked about previously. So I think those are my comments. The last thing I'll say is that if what I have just described. Would require more budget than is currently in the, the CIP. That we should talk about that. So I would ask staff to think about that and, and hopefully if they can give us some sense of that before this meeting concludes. Cause I would be certainly happy to recommend an increased budget for this master planning process for it to be able to do the things that, that I would recommend that it do.
Very good, thank you. Other thoughts? See, I can't quite see everybody on my screen now. So if you're. Raising your hand, I'll see it eventually. Raising your hand, I'll see it eventually. I, I can just say that with respect to Laura's thoughts about the airport, I, I'll throw my two bits in. Uh, to, to say that I think I, I agree with her, her thoughts completely. And that is partly to do with the fact of, uh, that this was originally supposed to be part of. The East Boulder Sub-Community Plan and, uh. And has basically not been addressed in that plan. And I think that is a, a big, uh. There's a big need for that. And I think the process outlined by Laura would be very appropriate. George.
Yeah, thank you. Um. I, I, I concur with sort of how, how Laura framed, uh, number one. Um, and also concur on that, the airport, I would say as it relates to scope and priorities. I, I think life safety is paramount. So whatever we can do to accelerate and keep the. Fire station on track as a priority number one in the plan. Uh, flood mitigation, those types of things. I don't think a lot of those things can come soon enough for the community. So that would be my recommendation on priorities. As far as, I, I don't know where this falls, where to make recommendations on policy issues surrounding the design, location of projects, recommendations on projects. I, I am, I, I'll bring up Alpine Balsam as sort of the, the, the poster child for something that I, I don't think it has. Uh, it's a complex project and it comes up multiple budgeting cycles and, um. It's difficult to approve of something entirely without understanding it in, in it, in its entirety. You know, I, I think the city spent north of forty million dollars for the site. I think the Brenton building renovation. I, I don't, I don't recall exactly what it was, was, uh, was. I, I don't even want to throw out a number, but, but I, I, I think it was, you know, roughly around six hundred dollars a foot, whatever the square footage of that building was. Uh, ten, twelve million dollars, whatever it was. And we have the deconstruction of the hospital, which is another sixteen million dollars. And we have the seventy million dollars for the pavilion. We have the four million dollars for project management. And, and I guess the other question is, what else is outstanding? And it doesn't. And, and, and I, it could be completely off base, but it doesn't feel like there's holistic accountability to the public around these things because it's piecemeal. And not presented as a whole each time. So we really understand that this may be costing the community a hundred and fifty million dollars plus. Uh, and are we receiving the benefit of what's being happening there? And, um, it's kind of a ship that's sailing. But I think that holistic view and, and keeping that. Top of mind to be able to present back to the public is important. Because I'm sure this is not the only kind of project that we're going to face as a community. And so, um. I recommendation on policy issues would be when presenting a project like this in a budget. To also be prepared to talk about the budget in its entirety. And what has been spent and what else will be spent that's not included in this. So we can really understand it. And so city council can understand it. And I'll leave it there. I'm sure others have plenty more to chime in on. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon.
Uh, so I'll just agree with everyone who's spoken, but I really would like to, for Laura to draft out some language that would capture what it is she's wants. To convey, because I think there were many layers and it'd be really helpful to have, uh, when, when we get to the voting part. To have, um, that captured in the way Laura that you would, um. Uh, like it to be captured. Um, I have. Uh, I, I'd like to, I'm pretty sure John's going to raise this, so I will just put a little. I think we might want to talk about it, SEEP for CU South. Just to have the discussion. Um, and we discussed this last year, um, and I think it is worth talking about. Uh, because of, uh, the criteria that are laid out, I think that there are some. Transportation and safety issues that really weren't. Resolved. They were. Included in the, what we got to look at as a planning board, which is not a concept review or a site review. But a, um, deep dive into the agreement between the city and the university. Um, but these projects aren't going to come to us for a concept review or site review. But they do have significant. Impacts on environmental and, uh, transportation and safety concerns. And I think it's at least worth a discussion about that. Thank you.
So, uh, Sarah, just to, to be clear, are you proposing that? Uh, that we should add a recommendation specifically regarding those matters that CU South that you just mentioned?
No, I'm proposing that we have a conversation about it. Um, because I'd like to hear what everyone has to say.
Okay. All right, Mark.
So far, I concur with a lot of what everyone has said and, but I, I, my, my first question. And then Sarah addressed a, a portion of it. Is. Our input tonight, I look at the key issues, one, two, three, four. If we don't form. Motions and vote on them. Then is. Are our comments just simply recorded and noted in the minutes and they disappear into the ether? And so I would encourage us. As board members to be thinking and, and, and Sarah encouraged Laura to do this, but. All of us that if we feel strongly about a particular, uh, portion. That, uh, we draft a motion. Put that motion forward, discuss it, vote on it, up or down. Et cetera, and then, um, move on to the next motion. But I would hope that we would have, um. A series of motions to debate. That are, um, separate one from another. I don't want to try to wordsmith and have a, a big motion. That incorporates a lot of different topics. I, I think they, they should all be separate, uh, topics and we should. As board members make note, if I'm just. Speaking and saying, yeah, I, you know, I kind of wish they had done this over here in this particular portion of the seat. That's a comment. Separate from any formal motions that might be made. So that's, I, that's my hope for what we've got going here. Is that we, we end up with an approval of the seat, of the seat, of the CIP. With any additional motions that we adopted.
I. I think that's an excellent way to go about it. And I also would like to avoid lengthy. Wordsmithing on a lengthy motion. So that I think, uh, the way we'll proceed is to have each motion being considered on its own. By the board, uh, and, uh. And then explicitly included as, as, uh, or not as a recommendation. Lisa.
Yeah, um, by and large, I agree with everything I've heard from other planning board members and I'm interested to get into more discussion. Um. I think something I want to keep in mind with this process is just. And not like to have a chilling effect, but I, you know, for us just to be thoughtful about what we really think needs to be introduced as motion language. Um, versus what should be a comment. Um, because I know I could go through and, you know, uh, re-prioritize the CIP in, in many ways. Um, that would align with my personal wishes and perhaps the entire board's wishes, in which case maybe it should be a motion. Um, you know, but other stuff is really probably just a matter of. Timing and budget and staffing and practicality. And I, I hope that we won't get into kind of. Litigating, um, too many fine points of it, just because I know a lot of work goes into it. Um, you know, that said, a lot of the things that have been raised so far, I'm like, oh yeah, that's a good point. You know, I don't know if I necessarily feel like it needs to be a motion for everything, but. Um, I think everything people have raised have been valid things to think about. And I don't know, I can't speak for staff, but I imagine things that staff is also pretty aware of. Um, so, yeah. That's, I'm, I'm just, you know, looking ahead to the later in the night.
I hope it won't be too much later, but, uh. Okay, I, I would like to make a suggestion also before I come with my, uh. Other comment, and that is, uh, I think George's comments about, uh, what's going on at Alpine Balsam and the. Having the big picture as well as the small picture was excellent. And if George could formulate a, uh, a motion. Uh, dealing with that, I, I think that would be very useful as well. Um, and. I, I, I'd just like to take. Oh, let me see, ML, your hand is up. Go ahead.
John, go ahead and finish your.
No, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll.
Okay, sorry, um. I, uh, so looking at these key issues, I, um, agree with key issue number one and the staff's. Uh. Analysis and recommendation around. It having met. The BBCP and master plan and sub-community and area plans. I think, um, this does that. I would support. Laura's. Recommendation on the scope and scheduling of the airport project. And I think it was under three that George was talking about the policy. And maybe it has some, you know. That these things like the boulder, like the balsam, Alpine balsam project come as a holistic. And maybe we're just taking it a part of it, but as a holistic, um. Understanding so that we can recognize the things that are being, are on the table for. For this, um, financial. Decision and recognize the things that are either from a prior or, or future. I think that is a great. I would support a motion around. Uh, holistic policy. Holistic information on design of surrounding design of projects. Um, and I don't think I have any recommendations, uh, additional projects that should undergo, uh, a seat. So that's, that's where I'm at with everything. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I, uh. Can just say that my. My, uh, I agree with, with everything that I've heard from my colleagues here tonight. I, I would like to add, and I'm, I'm, would be happy to formulate a motion in that respect or a recommendation. A motion for a recommendation, uh, regarding the CU South. Project, and that is that, uh. That we have never been fully informed of all of the costs associated with that. Project, uh, proposal. And by that, I mean. Some of the issues that Sarah pointed out just a few minutes ago, like. Transportation and traffic changes, other changes that, uh. That may be required if the project, if the project moves ahead as proposed by, uh, the Utilities Department. And I think that. A complete understanding of all of the expenses and consequences of that project. Should be a very high priority. And that should be a recommendation for us in this respect tonight. It's a, so my concern is similar to what George raised with Alpine Balsam. And that is that we are being asked to, uh, approve. Expenditures for small parts of the whole, but we don't have the whole. And I, I regard that as a very important element for our considerations. Anyway. That's what's on my mind in this respect. So. Further discussion? Sarah?
So I just want to thank all, all my, all the planning board members who brought up the issues related to. Uh, more complete. Budgetary numbers, uh. Not because. I believe staff is trying to keep us in the dark, but because we're being, we. Our previous, uh, board member, our, uh, board members and future board members are being asked to vote yea or nay on, um. With slight, with some, um, blinders on, a little bit of blinders on. And I think it's valuable to make a request for. Uh, more holistic capturing of numbers, even though the CIP we end up voting on. Is specifically for a five-year or six-year schedule, but to know what's in the years before year one, year zero and after year six, I think is very valuable, especially. With, with Alpine Balsam. Those numbers keep going up. When last I checked in on Alpine Balsam, it was supposed to be sixty million dollars. And in the CIP, it's seventy-four million dollars. So God knows what it will be next year. It's just, it just keeps going up and up and up. And I think it's helpful to. It's useful to request. Uh, the holistic picture financially on all these large scale projects. So I would, I'd be supportive of some kind of language that, that makes that a, a policy recommendation.
Okay, I, I've, I've, you know, I think that's a, a very appealing, uh, recommendation. I wonder. If it's, uh, since the issue is really the same for Alpine Balsam concerns and for CU South concerns. I wonder if it's useful to, uh. To frame it. Uh. In, in, with, to use those two as examples of the types of. Uh, projects where we should, where the big picture needs to be kept in mind as well as the. As the immediate smaller picture. Lisa?
Um, it occurs to me as well, and I, I think it may be different enough that, you know, to Mark's excellent point, we do want to split it off into something else, but there is. Some Venn diagram overlap also almost with the airport. Um, you know, and it's just kind of this idea of like, okay, like, we understand that this isn't happening now. It doesn't fit within the five year. We're being asked to, you know, prove this within a certain thing, but then it does inform later and is, is this something that will keep getting pushed out? Is this something that's going to cost more than we expect? How much has already been spent on this? What is the planned build-out timeframe? Um, and so I'm not sure, again, that, that those really belong together, especially because the airport's a little more specific. Um, but it's just interesting to me that those. Kind of overlap and that like the places where we find ourselves asking questions of staff and the things that we're like, oh, maybe we should make a policy recommendation here and. Make sure we highlight it to council really has to do with this more long-range planning, you know, and so the CIP comes up as this very. Point snapshot in time. Here's what we're about to spend money on that we've already scoped. Here we go. Um. But then we're asked to consider within the context of really big, long-range plans, like the BBCP, like department master plans, like sub-community area plans, which are. You know, thirty to fifty to hundred-year plans. And, and there, there can feel like a little bit of disconnect. So I, I agree that criteria one is met, um. But I think some of these things that we're discussing right now are, are kind of that, that inherent tension between looking at a five-year. You know, intent to spend and intent to do projects versus like these big things that influence, um, that. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thanks, Sarah.
Uh, I want to, um, sort of. Ask a question off of what John just said and what Lisa said, which is, um, I, this question of what would the criteria be for. A recommendation on a holistic financial picture for project X, Y, or Z. And I, you know, maybe it's a numeric criteria, like if a project is projected to cost more than twenty million dollars. Something like, or fifty million. I, I don't, I'm not making, I'm just pulling a number out of the air for the sake of the discussion. That that might, some, some sort of criteria that would, um. Gives staff, um. Uh, a frame, would give staff the insight it needs to know what to give us all the information on. Rather than sort of. Is it a five-year plan or a seven-year plan or a ten-year plan? Because we know with, with capital projects. They. I'm not sure if they're ever really on time, you know, finished on time. And there are all kinds of disruptions that can push them off the schedule they were on. There are all kinds of disruptions that can push them off the schedule they were on, as we've just seen in the last. Two years with COVID and then the following year with supply chain problems. So. Maybe a financial criteria, maybe there's some other criteria that you all can think of or would like to. Think are better alternatives.
Yeah. I, I get your point, ML.
Sarah, thank you for trying to frame. This, the parameters for understanding the holistic scope. Of a project and I'm wondering if a timeframe. Like if a project has a timeframe that was both before, will be both before and after this five year. Window that we are looking at the specifics on. I would be more inclined to think of, of time as being the parameter rather than a dollar figure. It, it seems like. If something goes on a long time, that is when we tend to lose a grip on the overall costs. Is, you know, Alpine Boston's been going on since twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And I think that that is, if it had been a two year project in and out, I don't think it would have that issue. But as it's now going into its seventh year. I, I think, anyway, I would suggest that maybe we look at, at time as the parameter. To, to consider.
Lisa?
So again, it seems to me that what we're asking for is just sort of. Context, you know, so we, we get these little individual pieces and parts and it's like, okay, approve this and I think probably we're going to, so that's fine, but um. But what we're asking for is. Context, both in terms of time and budget, which are very intertwined. So I think that's an excellent point. And then also I think like. And, and we tend to be very familiar with this because we're the planning board, but like. The historical current and projected. Like planning process or, or any other processes that are ongoing around it, you know what I mean? So like, we're not going to be building out Alpine Balsam until we complete. XYZ and the other thing, you know, we've heard about this from staff, you know, we're not. We're still trying to figure out how we get funding from FAA for the airport and how that will work depending on like how, you know. And I don't think we need all those finer grain things. That's why staff, so many staff are present for us right now to ask questions of and thank you for your time. But some little thing around that, you know, it's like, like almost like three bullets, you know, that's kind of like. You know, this is part of this, this is about how long we think it's going to take. We, we can't tell you exactly the price, but it's somewhere within this range to this range. You know, and these are like a couple of the other key moving parts that are impacting this and a lot of that does show up in the document. I don't want to pretend that you haven't done that, but almost just in like a very. And, and, and again, you know, staff may have already tried to provide this to us, but you know, some neat little area, you know, where. Those three things are pulled out on a table or a list or something like that might. Help us. So, so I, I don't know how much we want to prescribe how they present. The plan to us or how they present the information to us next time. In motion language, we can be more broad, but just to help staff out, I think that's kind of what we're asking. Does that fit with what other people are thinking of? Just. Context. Okay.
I see my thumb up. I don't see anyone else's. I see Brad.
There was nodding, lots of nodding.
Okay, Brad might have some wisdom for us here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Wisdom, that's a high bar. I don't. I don't know if I have that for you tonight, but I, I do want to say on behalf of staff, we really appreciate all this conversation around that. And if I'm. Repeating i- in summary form, what I'm hearing is a desire for certain threshold. Types of projects that are generally big in scale, multi-year and impactful to the community. You've got a desire to, to have a deeper context for those. And, and to be able to have that. We certainly will take your lead on emotion or how you do that. That the context and discussion today is helpful. But maybe a way to frame that, and this is just one suggestion, is that. For those bigger projects, we could do. Individual presentations and, and I'm, I'm going to look to my peers and colleagues to kind of maybe. Build on this com, this concept that I'm, that I'm putting forward, but. That when it comes to a larger project like, like Alpine Balsam or one of those. That we give you kind of just a status report at some key. Decision point along the way. The one thing that strikes me is all of these kind of exist at a snapshot in time. And when we, if we were to frame these all deliberately. As part of the CIP. They would be naturally constrained by whatever we know at that point in time, you know, relative to. Its life cycle in, in, in the overall. We can certainly plan to do that in future years. Another option might be to just be deliberate on bringing certain types of projects. To your awareness for an overview. Which would then inform on a year by year basis, those. And, and I think the direction we provided and kind of the type of threshold projects, these are big, obviously multi-year types of things. That I think we could collaboratively identify and just. Work session kind of conversation. So having just kind of brainstormed that, if. If you're open to it, Mr. Chair, I, I offer any other comments from other staff to kind of speak to what I'm suggesting.
I think that would be very useful.
Thanks for that, Brett. I, I actually want to give Mark Wolf an opportunity to chime in a little bit on this. I, I do want to remind the board that we are. In the first year of a three year process and, and re-envisioning and re-imagining how we present the annual budget. So, so Mark, I don't know if there's anything that you want to chime in on how we're presenting this in, in future years and if there is any. Sensitivity around when the budget's released in, in your eyes versus what. And how much information we can go to on, on some of these projects.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. I, I think Brad's suggestion was great for those individual projects and in my mind. Lives a bit outside of the budget process itself. The good news with Open Gov is that the detail behind some of these big projects. Once released will kind of live out there and we'll be able to update those pages on a regular basis. So that, that will certainly help. Going forward and the board's comments tonight can certainly help inform how frequently we make those updates.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let's, let's think about how we want to move ahead, you know. We had a proposal specifically focused on the airport. And it would be interesting to learn whether. The maker of that proposal is willing to include it in these other issues that we were discussing. Or whether that should remain independent of, of these other issues. Laura, do you have any thoughts about that?
You know, I've, I would like the specific things that I'm recommending about the airport to be considered, you know, specifically and independently. Regardless of what happens with the other issue. I, I don't care whether we make it a formal recommendation of the planning board. Or we just leave staff with notes and trust that they will, you know, will have heard that this is something the planning board is expecting. So that when they come back with the design of the master plan process, that hopefully these things are incorporated. I don't know that we need to go to the level of a recommendation, but that, that's fine with me too, if that would make it more clear.
Okay, Mark, your hand is up.
Well, I, I, I would encourage any of us. To, I, I think motions bring, motions and recommendations. That are debated and voted bring clarity and direction. And they shouldn't be made lightly, but. I think that if they're important to you as a board member and for the direction you want to provide. Counsel and staff that, anyway, I would look forward to. Debating and, and voting on, on people's, people's motions and. You know, I, I know it's hard to actually try to come up with a sentence that conveys. What it is that you're trying to achieve, but I would encourage you to give it a shot.
Okay, Sarah and I, I'm. Losing my connection here. I'm going to have to log out and log in again. So Sarah, if you could take over chairing until I'm back, then I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I will do that. Come back soon.
Yeah, I'll be right back.
Alright, so I'll just make my comment, which is very much along the lines of Mark's. Laura, I think it would be valuable for you to phrase out a. A motion or a recommendation. So that, uh, because I think there's probably a fair bit of support for it on the planning board and it, it's always valuable. To have a vote that shows that, that staff sees and that. Counsel, even if they don't accept it, also sees. So that would be my recommendation. Laura, do you want to respond?
I have motion language ready to go. So at the appropriate time.
Okay, we'll come back to that in a second. Lisa?
Well, yeah, I will. I, I don't, I don't want to. Pre-impact in a bad way Laura's existing motion language. I would say. For me, you're on the airport, I would be strongly inclined to vote for. I think I would be, I guess I haven't heard what it is. I, I believe I'd be strongly inclined to vote for a language. Around kind of what the planning process will be, how we'll look at, we're going to do it. Putting it on an actual timetable to consider how we want to do it, explore what the options are. I'm not yet at the point where I. Would feel comfortable saying this is what I want you to do with the space or like, I want you to put a bunch of houses and make it only emergency or something like that. Which may or may not matter Laura, because perhaps I'm the only person who feels that way, but I just wanted to offer up ahead of time kind of. For straw poll. That, that I'd be more inclined toward planning process, what are our options? Let's get the show on the road. And less toward prescriptive, what we think it should happen with it.
I'm with you a hundred percent. At least I think I am. We'll see when the motion language comes out.
So John is back. Uh, you, Lisa gave some thoughts to Laura. I hand the baton back to you, John.
Okay, thank you. I, sorry, I missed that. George?
Yeah, I, I had a. Sorry, I have one more detailed question for staff regarding Alpine Balsam because. I was, was rolling around in my head as I was thinking about the seventy million dollar number. One thing that was mentioned as that was being sort of presented back was. The pavilion renovation is going to be somewhere between seventy to a hundred thousand square feet. As a building owner myself, right, I, I, I want to understand sort of where we are at in that process and, and, and. How that seventy million dollars has been come up with? Because that's a big swing, a thirty thousand square foot swing is a big swing and the question is. You know, should we be approving that without more information as to what we're actually targeting? And I know the nature of work. Is changing within hybrid and office. So the question is sort of. What we're getting for that? And could someone sort of give me a little bit, is that, is that where we're at seventy to a hundred thousand square feet or is it, is it something narrower than that?
So if a member of staff is willing to respond, that would be great.
Michelle Craig, if you're still on the call, please.
Yeah, and I'm so sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to repeat the question I had.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, actually it was. It was no, no problem at all. So when you were speaking about Alpine Balsam and we were talking about the seventy million dollar number for the pavilion. One of the things you had mentioned was it's going to be somewhere between seventy to a hundred thousand square feet. And my question is, boy, that's a, that's a big delta. To be asking us to approve a number of seventy million. Is there more definition around? Is that really the swing that we're still looking at or is there more definition around the plan?
Around the square footage, so. It, it is the analysis that we're entering into right now. We are entering and we just hired our. Actual design team to start work on the pavilion. And this project was identified in our facility's master plan. We know the total consolidation that we're looking at with buildings that could be consolidated. Is larger than Alpine Balsam could hold. And so it really is the cost benefit analysis of, you know. What is the right build out for this site? Knowing it won't consolidate all the buildings and, and all the infrastructure that we know is coming due for replacements. What can it consolidate and, and reasonably provide services for the community? And so. We're looking at the existing building and then what are the opportunities to provide more. On that building, because we have two sides of the building, we're going to have to rebuild anyway. Sort of like I described at East, while you've got a building half torn apart is the right time to kind of build the right square footage. So we're in that analysis currently. And that's the phase of work that we're in now. So there is a swing at the moment.
So, so in my mind, that is a, a huge swing, right? I mean, thirty thousand square feet on top of seventy thousand square feet is almost a fifty percent. Increase in square footage. Is that budget ready for prime time for us to vote on if, if it's, if it's hasn't been narrowed down more?
Well, so no, we don't have a final budget on the cost. We have the budget that we developed. A number of years ago, what we're evaluating is the seven to ten buildings. That would be replaced by this consolidation. And so. Between now and twenty thirty, that's kind of putting off forty million dollars worth of. Unfunded liability and renewal that's due in those buildings. And so there's a savings. Both in operations and energy, when we take those buildings out of the system that can be applied towards the funding of this project. So in parallel with the programming analysis, we are doing a pretty extensive financial analysis. There's upfront capital costs that we know will come, but there's also significant. Operations and maintenance costs and also energy costs that will save, that will turn into an annual savings. That can go towards funding the project. And so. That really is, is the kind of the complete package that we're looking at right now. That's part of looking at. The value of adding more here to take antiquated infrastructure out of the system.
I, 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 I fully appreciate that and understand that. Thank you for the answer. I guess. The question is, if I was looking at, at this as an owner, right, if I own this building. And I was asked to be approving seventy million dollars of my own money. In this case, I'm the taxpayer, approving taxpayer money. It seems like a very loose ask for seventy to a hundred thousand square feet. Without more specificity, specificity. So I, I guess my, my question is. Without slowing that project down, what money would we need for this year? In order to come to those conclusions, to get a more fully baked budget. So that we really have transparency as to what we're getting.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And you know, I'm, I'm gonna ask for a little help from Mark because. I, I think I also want to be clear about what is in the budget for this year is actually the additional design money to get to exactly what you're talking about. The seventy million is part of a funding, an annual funding program. That has been budgeted for a couple of years and it's part of a debt service. It's a total, so. My recollection is that that is not the actual request for this year. What the actual request. For twenty twenty three is for that additional design money to get to the actual answers you're looking for. The seventy million is, is to some degree in, in, you know, understanding with this conversation, it's not as complete as what you're looking for, but it's to try to put. The design money request that's actually the twenty twenty three budget request in context of the total construction project, which is the seventy million, which is. Part of a program debt service over several years.
Yeah, I thought I could just add to that. Michelle's right on. That the CIP contemplates the large investment, the seventy million dollars is a placeholder right now. In twenty twenty five, we need to do that financial analysis as Michelle's describing that work is. Just starting. What you see in the budget, which would, would be what counsel would be considering in October. Is three point six five million dollars for some flood mitigation work on the site. It's a part of the entire Alpine Balsam site. And then another million. And then another a million dollars for the continued design work. That design work is critical to develop a financial strategy. Uh, so that we can um determine what the best path forward is for city investment. Um, other, other financing structures. Um, that financing structure would be discussed with council or we would get some guidance on that. And then the final quote city investment on um the rest of that project would come forward in a future budget. Um, likely in pieces in twenty-four and then again in twenty-five. So the budget itself for twenty twenty-three will only consider appropriation for that continued design work for, for the project.
Uh, that's helpful. So, uh, yes, a point of clarification, maybe I'm the only one that doesn't understand this. What are we, are we, are we tacitly approving the seventy million, even though we're only really approving the million dollars for the design work? Or are we, are we saying we're voting for the seventy million for the project? Not knowing if this is gonna be a seventy thousand square foot building or a hundred thousand square foot building?
Mark, I think I'm kind of looking to you for a little help.
And I made, um, I made punt to um, Chris Rangelas as well, but I, I would say that what we're asking planning board this evening is uh to look at the key issues that are up on the screen as it relates to the CIP. What I'm hearing from the board is perhaps uh some type of recommendation around um a detailed financial analysis before any um uh construction dollars are approved or appropriated for um, the Western hub. Um, I, you know, I think it, if a part of a recommendation is looking at the dollars that are proposed to be appropriated in twenty twenty-three, certainly that could be a part of a recommendation. Um, what council will be considering in October is um both, but they will be appropriating dollars only in twenty twenty-three.
Mark, can I chime in with a question to you and Michelle and maybe others? Would it be accurate to say that planning board is being asked to approve and recommend ye-year one as, as specific dollars and years two through six as really a um concept of the remaining years of the CIP, but recognizing that those get revisited on an annual basis. So it's a rolling decision, in other words.
Uh, yeah, Brad, I would say it's accurate that it's a rolling, that each budget year is a new decision for budget appropriation.
So, uh, board member Boone, I, I don't know if that helps frame the issue a little bit more for you.
I, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna harp on it, you know, and, 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 and and sabotage the meeting on this one issue. It, it, it's just a question of, you know, my understanding is last year was a different number. We haven't even nailed down the, the, the scope of this building of the, you know, uh, we're not talking a, you know, about a two or three thousand square foot difference. We're talking about literally a fifty percent, you know, change, a swing in how this is set up. I just, I don't understand. I, I'm having a hard time understanding if I, if, yeah, I'm trying to put myself in, in the shoes of, of being of, you know, fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer and all this, you know, just being put up a, a brand new number with that kind of swing without more information. Just seems a little irresponsible to me. Um, without, you know, again, that, that, that's, that's my point of view. I, I, I guess I, I'd like to hear from other board members. Um, if, if they want more clarity on that, or whether, you know, I, I, I don't wanna sidetrack us on that, but and, and again, this is an issue that I'm a little bit more familiar with, and so that's why I'm focused on it. I guess it brings up a broader issue of what else am I not looking at that may have similar um components? Um, and, and, and how can we really? You know, I, 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 I'd like to hear from sort of my other colleagues, i-if anyone else has similar concerns or um if we just wanna move on from this before we get to motions.
Okay, I see Mark's hand is up there.
So George, I sympathize with your desire to understand what it is we're voting on. Because I have been in situations on, uh, in, in the past of having uh been told, well, you know, uh, a prior board tab voted on that six years ago, it's over, it's done, really can't vote on it. And you know, being told um, it's too early to have input and then next time it's too late to have input. So um, uh, so I, I sympathize, on the other hand, uh, projects of the scale of moving a city campus from A to B and uh actually also from A to B, from site X to site Y to the Alpine Balsam site. I didn't wanna confuse my uh letters there. Um. It is something that obviously the city has been working on a very long time and we're incredibly slow and about, about actually reaching resolutions and decisions and carrying forward. So having said all of that, um, I would simply say that uh either in the form of careful feedback to be reported included in the minutes or a simple motion. Just simply say that planning, you know, put a motion out there, planning board approves the uh initial uh one million and three point uh six million for um uh for planning and budgetary purposes and uh we feel we do not, we have insufficient information to a-approve or deny a CIP with a seventy million dollar um placeholder that we wanted acknowledged as a placeholder. Anyway, something like that. And, and it would be up to you to create that language, but I sympathize, but I think the answer is to say, hey, we've gotta spend some money so we can get to that answer. And I think that, that the um multi-year CIP that's been put before us is saying, we've gotta spend some money now because we can't really answer your questions, which are good questions. We can't really answer them tonight.
I, I appreciate that. I, I think, I think you're right. I guess the question is, so what are we, beyond, beyond the million and three, which I have no issue with? Right? It's the question, are, are we, are we giving a thumbs up to the seventy million? Um, without a more infrom, in-increasing it from whatever it was before, uh, without any more information. Um, and if we are, uh, I can definitely make a motion, which is to say, um, you know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not supportive of increasing the budget because I do think things have changed, right? I know that there was at one point discussion of a fifth floor being put on the building. Uh, the nature of work has changed. If, if, if pro, if, if construction escalation is the factor, um, maybe we need to think about how the city works and fit into an envelope that the taxpayers had thought we were getting at sixty million dollars. And maybe it is, you know, and that's the thing, we don't have, we don't have anything that's explaining, you know, that is a, is a massive swing. And I know you're a building owner too, Mark. I mean, can, can you imagine someone coming to you and presenting uh, uh thirty percent escalation and saying, hey, we don't know if the building is gonna be this size or fifty percent bigger, uh, we'll let you know. And then, you know, next year's CIP, we're gonna get is eighty-five million for the same thing. And um, I, and I, I'm not, I wanna, I wanna make that is, I, I know staff is working through a lot of different stuff. I just it just doesn't feel like nearly enough information beyond sort of the approval of this year's thing to not slow things down. Um, as, as our fiduciary responsibility and as council, I would hope council would view it as their fiduciary responsibility to do the same thing. So, um, I, I can put that into articulate that when we get to a motion.
I think it's, I think it's up to you to get to a motion.
Sarah.
Um, yeah, so George, I would support a motion. I don't know what it will say, but I would be supportive of a motion that differentiates between what we're approving for this year. And um, uh, reckon, acknowledging that staff has to do projections out um for budgeting purposes, but that essentially sort of planning board reserves the right to reconsider should the numbers come back. When the numbers come back at next year's CIP, and if I could make a recommendation that that be written to incorporate both CU South, which is also a very big number and Alpine Balsam. And um, it doesn't preclude next year's planning board from approving CIP. It's just putting, letting staff and city council know that we're concerned about these fluctuating and uncertain numbers.
Laura.
Okay, I, I don't know if I've been tracking all the conversation and I was not here for, I was not on planning board for the initial, you know, previous steps with Alpine Balsam and CU South. So please forgive me if I'm misunderstanding something. To me, it seems like these two projects are different in, in kind, right? Like with CU South, this is primarily a, a flood management project. Um, you know, that it's a public safety project and the components are pretty much uh already defined as far as I understand it. And if the costs are changing, that's a pretty direct reflection of things that are out of the city's control. It's not like the city is designing the project to be bigger or different. It's, it's just that as they get further into planning and uncover, the more things they need to do, costs can escalate. So I'm not, whereas with Alpine Balsam, I, it sounds to me like, you know, there might be some design choices that are different, that, um, you know, is the building this size or that size? That are more within the city's control and are not yet defined. So that gives me a little bit pause about linking those two things together. And in, in terms of the Alpine Bals- Balsam project, you know, are we talking about asking the city when they, you know, right now we're approving some planning money, right? Like some study and planning money. Are we asking them to, you know, define some different alternatives? Maybe there's one that's more cost constrained and one that's more visionary or idealized. And then planning board could pick between them depending upon, you know, the state of the world and the state of the budget and the appetite of the public and all of the different factors that go into whether a city builds something that's quite visionary and expensive or a bit more modest and budget constrained. Is, is that what we're asking for Alpine Balsam in terms of controlling the cost escalation or is, am I misunderstanding?
I, I think from, from, if, if that question was directed to me since I've been the most vocal on it. I think I don't think terms like visionary or things necessarily belong in this conversation, because I, I, I just, the, the question is you know, is one of the, one of the points that was made was this could be a seventy thousand square foot building or a hundred thousand square foot building. It could be equally as visionary, one just might be smaller. But um, the, the, the question is, when this was posed to the taxpayers, you know, it, it was one project and one cost, and now we're sitting here and things are escalating. And we still have a fifty percent square swing in just the square footage. Forget about anything else, right? I mean, this is like a, this is like basic stuff at this point still. So, um being asked to approve, you know, a double digit million dollar number directionally without any information around that seems to me like, um I'm putting myself in the shoes of a building owner. I, it would be a, a crazy thing for me to do as a building owner myself. And so I, I'm trying to put myself in those shoes and I don't see how we could approve something like that beyond saying we're approving the money for this year to keep the project going. Um, let's assume that the money is still what was projected out originally. And then let's see where we land and make sure that we're being financially responsible before we agree to pump the budget by fourteen or fifteen million dollars, whatever that number is. Um, visionary or not.
Can, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I just, I, I, I completely empathize, right? Like I would not be happy if, yeah, I was trying to redesign my house and people told me it was gonna cost fifty percent more. Like I, I get that. Um, I guess what's not clear to me is to what extent the budget escalation is within the city's control. Um, and what it is, and to what extent it is, you know, a, a reflection of the state of the market and construction costs and material costs and things that were unanticipated uh complications in the design. Um, and so I, I think it, it's very hard to tell the city, go ahead and plan as you're planning to plan. And then, but we might reject your plans and then you have to start over with another plan. Um, so I, I feel like it's, it's reasonable for us to maybe ask the city to provide, you know, like different, here's the very cost constraint, constrained scenario. If we are keeping the cost to the minimum to still meet the needs of the project versus some nice to haves that we might wanna consider because they might make sense. It's not a big overrun and it gives us a lot of extra benefit. And then give us those scenarios to um, to consider. To me, that, that makes sense to say in the planning process right now, please give us some, the, the most cost constraint scenario versus one that provides extra benefit with some nice to haves. And then we can make a choice rather than saying, just go ahead and do one plan.
I, 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 I guess I'm not saying that. I'm saying the thirty thousand square foot swing is, you, it's not building a house and your house just is construction escalation after three years. This is, we don't even know what the plan is yet because it might be seventy thousand square feet or a hundred thousand square feet. Um, and it seems irresponsible to be put in that, in that, in that position as a decision maker to say, I'm just gonna agree with an escalation and, you know, you know, tell me later what it is.
Maybe I missed it, but I don't understand why there's that uncertainty around the building size. Was that explained and I missed it?
Okay, I, I think Lisa has uh has some comments here.
Yeah, I, I, I think these are all really interesting points. I think the kind of the key thing that I'm wondering about, which you started to touch on, I think Laura, um, I'm sure you've been thinking about too, Georgie, is just like to what extent does staff need that budget, if at all? Um, in order to get to the next stage of planning. So you know, that, that's what I'm most interested in. You know, if, if we say, hey, that this is way too uncertain and, and we don't feel comfortable doing this, it feels irresponsible, like not like we're being good fiduciaries, fine, but like, why did, and, and I don't know, um, John, if we can ask staff to speak up, but why did staff ask for that? Um, and do they want to make an argument for why they really need that? Or can we maybe put a little bit of a bow on this part of the discussion? Maybe get some motion language, you know, and just kind of say, hey, come back to us with something more concrete. But before we start doing that, I'd like to understand if and how we are tying staff's hands, you know, in a way that will cost more later or is going to get us to a potentially worse outcome, you know, so yeah, why, why that number? And if we take that number away, what breaks? Um, I'd like to know that before we get too much further on, on what we're gonna recommend.
Okay, I, I think those are reasonable questions and I see Mark uh is prepared to respond.
Yeah, thanks, John. Um, uh, good question. Uh, I would say that it's important to know that the CIP is a plan. And so we put a dollar number in there to reflect that it is an anticipated expense. Now, whether or not that number is fifty, sixty, seventy, um, that's the type of analysis that we're doing. So I would say you're not uh tying staff's hands as long as council appropriates the twenty twenty-three amount um that is requested in the CIP for that continued design work. Um, that number, that seventy million dollar placeholder number will change because it is in the out years um of a plan. Um, but, you know, instead of leaving it out of the plan and then having to explain that we're going through a refining process and then having to include a large number. I, I think we were trying to be transparent about the um the city investment at some point, but the scale of which is, is still certainly, um, you know, needs to be refined as we go into the next stages of the planning process.
Thank you. Um, Lisa, does that, uh, is that clear to you?
I think that helps and hopefully it also, um, for folks who I, I haven't been, to be honest, but for folks who are thinking about a potential motion language, hopefully that helps you, um, with what to draft and also helps us all think about how we might vote on this.
I, I'd like to uh make a, a couple of comments here too about how I'm regarding this. One is that it seems unrealistic uh to me to regard ourselves as fiduciaries here. And maybe this is something in which uh Hella or legal advice is useful. I don't think that I can be a fiduciary. I have no idea what is re, what the city's income is this year or next year or the, the future years. I'm, I'm you know, I can't judge whether the expenses that are being proposed here are something completely beyond reason. are something completely beyond reason for the city or, or are, are modest. So I regard this as strictly a, a planning document for, in which this year's expenses is what we're actually being asked to, to address. And the future, uh, the future year's expenses are staff's estimate for today of where, of what they might need in the future. But we're not approving those. We're just acknowledging them. And so that, that means I have less heartburn in terms of considering myself uh, as a fiduciary, because I don't think I am. But, but I think George's comments are absolutely appropriate that it makes a big difference whether we're talking about a seventy thousand square foot or a hundred thousand square foot office building for the city. But the city needs this year's appropriation to get to, to, to know what the answer to that is. And that's why I'm willing to move ahead with this year's, uh, you know, appropriation. ML.
Thank you, John. Um, this is, this is a fascinating conversation. Um, I think that there are two things, um, that are kind of getting tangled up here. One is, uh, you know, staff has, um, spoken up about the answers to some of these questions. They need the funds to get to the answers and I think we're all aware of that. Um, you know, comprehensive programming will substantiate the scope of work. So if right now they don't know the scope of work, it's, you know, X sized building to X sized building. That's because perhaps the comprehensive programming hasn't been done. But that's how you get to, to those kind of answers. And it seems to me that what we're talking about here is key issue number three and perhaps crafting a recommendation. Uh, that puts in place a policy for SIP information on complex and multi-year projects to provide a holistic context for the entire project. I mean, I think that's kind of what we're, we're looking for is how does this fit into, a bigger picture, because I don't think any of us are comfortable, you know, in our own personal lives or, or professional lives with saying, okay, I'm gonna agree to, you know, ten dollars here, not knowing that that ten dollars is gonna get us to know whether we're spending fifty or a thousand dollars tomorrow. But I think what we're looking for is just, can we get more information? And I think that that speaks to key issue number three. And maybe it's a recommendation that, um, you know, in, in future CIPs, that for complex and multi-year projects, we get holistic information so that we can better understand what we're being asked in what context we're being asked to approve that year's budget.
Lisa.
Sorry, my hand was still up from before.
Oh, okay. Mark.
Um, in the last meeting, George urged us to move on. Uh, and how, in, in trying to help us, uh, I, I think this is excellent discussion, but in trying to help us move on, I just sent, I sent it from my regular email. I, I meant to send it from my planning board email. Motion, suggested motion language, my suggested motion language. And I'm, I'm curious if people have received it, can take a look at it. And maybe we can actually discuss this motion language and, and, um, get on to some other, we have, we have many other topics, uh, regarding this CIP other than Alpine Balsam.
Okay, I, I just received yours.
Okay. And I sent it to the planning board, so I, I don't, I don't know if it went to, I, I'm always confused by exactly who that goes to, but I hope, uh, it went to the appropriate staff as well.
And Mark, for open meeting purposes, could you go ahead and read the motion language into the record as well, please?
Sure. Planning Board approves the twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-eight CIP regarding Alpine Balsam. Oh, uh, okay, I, I, I mean, I, I guess I should say the Alpine Balsam CIP. And then I have a set of parentheses taken from the table. I, I'm not supposed to be reading this, but it's like, uh, I'll just, I'll just keep reading. Parentheses, parentheses, three, one, five, 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 seven, oh, one, one, nine. Closing parentheses dash Western City Campus at A dash V Development and parentheses, three, one, five, 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 seven, oh, two, two, one. Closing parentheses dash Alpine Balsam implementation for CIP years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Period. The board reserves their decision for years and expenditures beyond twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I, so can you explain why you're limiting this just to Alpine Balsam? And why you don't, uh, make it true for, for every, every, uh, project that we're looking at?
Um, the reason for that is, as I had said earlier, I think that, um, overall, my sense is, with a few exceptions, the board actually finds that the, the proposed CIP for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight is in fact a fine document and an excellent planning tool. And we can, we can approve a great portion of it, uh, en masse. But that when we have an exception, it should be a specific, uh, exception. And, um, and in this case, we're speaking specifically about Alpine Balsam and I agree with Laura. I don't wanna tie Alpine Balsam to CU South. I don't wanna tie these things together. If, if we as a board have a very specific, uh, concern regarding the Alpine Balsam CIP in year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, et cetera, then let's make, let's, let's debate that concern, make that concern known. And, uh, and then we can either agree or disagree on, on that concern and then move on.
Laura.
So I have a legal question. Would this motion have any practical impact? I, I mean, I thought we, don't we look at the CIP every year? And don't we have, and you know, we reserve our decision every year for expenditures beyond the year that we approved it? I mean, I, I think what I heard from staff is that what's beyond this year's budget is an estimate. And we'll get another crack at it next year when it comes back. And, and whatever year is, we're looking at it, that first year is the one that really matters. I see Hella has, has logged on.
Yeah, I, I think you're right that you're approved, you know, actually the board makes a recommendation. Council is the one, um, the, the, the body that approves the CIP. Um, and, and I think you're right, the budget for this year gets approved by council this year, but the other years are kind of planning ahead, looking forward and, and staff stated, let's see, this will come back again. So that's a true statement. And in, in looking at the, um, motion language that Mark, um, proposed, that maybe you could take a look at the recommended motion language in the memo just to make sure that all of the items you guys are supposed to address are being addressed. Then the seat, I think, is part of the recommended motion language. And I think you're, it almost fits it. Um, but maybe you could use the recommended motion language and then make an adjustment except regarding Alpine Balsam and the Western City Campus. We reserve, we, we only make a recommendation with regard to the C peers. Twenty, is it twenty-three and forty-four, but not beyond that? Is, is that what you're trying to do?
You asking me? I, I, I was trying to, uh, condense George's concerns into a simple motion. And so when I looked at the table with the expenditures, it's the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Look, the expenditures look to be planning, uh, look to me to be planning, uh, design development sort of expenditures. And, um, and just being, I was being explicit that we were not approving expenditures beyond twenty twenty-four, which look to be construction, design, building, uh, building or renovating at the site. And twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four were, were design and, uh, planning expenditures.
Because you don't feel like you have enough information for that recommendation at this time?
Right, yeah, because, uh, in twenty twenty-five, suddenly it goes from three million to seventy million for what exactly is unknown at this point?
Laura.
Uh, so, uh, I think where I land on this, and, and I'm willing to support the will of the majority. And if folks feel like it's necessary and helpful to make a motion on this, um, I will support the majority. But I think where I land is that I, I would like to move on. I think staff have heard the concern around cost escalations at Alpine Balsam. Um, and hopefully they will take that into consideration as they do their planning over the next couple of years.
Uh, I, I'm not prepared to move on exactly, at least from my perspective. Because, but, and, 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 but in general, I agree with you. I think staff has heard it, uh, so I, I don't wanna spend more time on it than it's worth. I, I appreciate Mark's attempt at, at trying to put that together and actually agree with his, you know, general recommended motion, uh, from my perspective. I, what, what I am trying to avoid, whether it's Alpine Balsam or other things, is that if you look at past documents, what's happened is, is that you have this, you know, this massive escalation. And then this is pointed to next year and say, well, you know, our budget's only really going up from what we, seventy million to seventy-five million, right? And, and, and I see that happening every year. And this, uh, what I'm afraid of this document being used for, um, not maliciously, but that's, you know, the, 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 these estimates are in here for a reason, is to justify next year's escalation, say, well, it's only five million or only ten million above that. And, um, so what I don't wanna be approving is, I, I don't wanna be seen to be approving the seventy million. I wanna be seen to be approving what staff has recommended and going through the process expeditiously. But I want, I want council and planning board to look at what we had originally projected back when this project started, when it's time to spend the big dollars and make sure that this is not the document that's pointed to, but that the original document is what's discussed as we talk about these escalations to make sure that there's true transparency in what's happening. Um, that's, that's my concern around the seventy million. It's not that, it, it, as long as staff has heard that concern and, and something like Mark's general recommendation is in there, that makes sense to me. I just don't want the seventy million dollars in there as something to point to, to defend the next escalation without having the discussion, well, we didn't even know if this was a seventy thousand or a hundred thousand square foot building when we were approving, you know, tacitly approving this seventy million dollar number. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I, I would, I would support that motion or, you know, changing Mark's motion to, um, recommendation rather than approval, because that's our, that's our responsibility. Um, it's really counsel to approve it, but that's, that's mine. And I'll, I'll shut up and let people talk and we can decide from there. Thank you.
Okay, Mark has some hand up there.
Um, I, I guess I, 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 I did this language to help us move forward. Um, maybe what I'll do is I'll just propose this as a motion if, if I haven't done so formally already. I think I did when I read the motion. And then I'll, I'll see if we have a second. And that way we can either, it dies and we, then staff can take our comments or we can, we can move forward and debate the motion. But let's, let's, uh, let's fisher cut bait.
I think that's a, that's a reasonable approach.
So how, so how, have I made a motion? Did I, did I actually make that motion?
I don't think you've made it yet.
I'm sorry, it's, it's not a motion, as written there, it's not a motion that actually has complete sentences. And it doesn't actually make sense. So I think it needs to, I mean, I, the intention is there, but it's not a, it's not a, uh, an articulate, an articulation that is clear.
Do you have, um, edits that you would suggest, Sarah?
No, Mark, Mark wrote it, so, but Mark should correct it. But it's just, there's, there's commas and Western City at AB Development and like it just, can you just?
Sarah, that, the, the language.
I'm sorry, Mark, just clarify the language, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, well, the language is taken from, from the CIP, exactly. Planning Board approves the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight CIP regarding Alpine Balsam. CIP, so, so if you go to the table on page.
Okay, but then you're making a motion that is a subset of the broader motion that we are, was the original request from, from staff for us to respond to. So I think what you're, what you're, this is, this would be a, uh, uh, a friendly to the app, to the suggested motion language. That's what I'm saying, because I think that this is, this, this appears absent context. And I think the context is the suggested motion language and then this would be a friendly of some kind.
Okay, then, then I, I think with a period, we can, um, fix this. So I, I can't edit what's on the screen, um, so I believe that's Amanda there, so, um, let's go, Planning Board approves the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight CIP, period. Space, capital R. Regarding the, the Alpine Balsam CIP. And then the, my brackets and numbers are cut and pasted from the table. Okay, and after twenty twenty-four, they changed that period to a comma, delete the period, lower the, uh, the, the T on the board for CIP twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. The board reserves their decision for years and expenditures beyond twenty twenty-four.
Hello.
And, sure, uh, Mr. Chair, can I interject with a procedural kind of clarification? I, I think there may be two thought processes here that aren't being understood. And, and, and Mark, if I, if I'm wrong about this, please keep me honest. But I think you were recommending this as a motion to be voted on. And then there would be a second motion along the lines of this suggested motion. So you were anticipating two votes.
Absolutely.
I think other folks are reading it as an effort to be a substitute for the suggested motion. So maybe there could be clarification on that point.
Thank you, Brad. Uh, absolutely. This, this is a, uh, a specific motion not to replace or, uh, the suggested motion, but, uh, would be adopted separately from an overall, uh, overall motion to approve the CIP.
I see Hella has some thoughts too there.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you would be comfortable making the main motion, Mark, and then modifying it with the language that you proposed. Um, for example, taking the main motion language as it's written, um, and stating. regarding Alpine Balsam CIP, the numbers Western City Campus at AB Development and Alpine Balsam implementation for CAP years for um, the, the board recommends approval of CIP for years 2023 and 2024, but reserves its decision for years and expenditures beyond 24.
Sure. I like that. So again, without, um, can, uh, I don't know if you can help Amanda here or whoever, um.
Sorry, Hella, I missed it.
Amanda, could you please, um, take that yellow language, move it up so that it flows into the suggested motion? I'll just move it up, all of it, and then we'll edit it.
Okay. Oops.
Okay, delete that first sentence. It says, planning board approves the yellow, the first yellow sentence, just delete that whole thing. Regard, and then, so I'm going to read now regarding the Alpine Balsam CIP, and then all of that through the closed parentheses after Alpine Balsam implementation, comma, after the closed parentheses, planning board recommends approval for CIP years 2023 and 24, comma, but and then delete board. And I think we have it. Does that look right, Hella?
Yeah, and, yeah, thank you. And maybe change, um, decision to recommendation.
Okay, in the last line there, change decision to recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Hella. Mark, does that look right? Since it's your, it's your motion?
Better than ever.
Mark, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. So now I need to read the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I move the planning board recommends to the city manager and city council the recommended draft 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program, CIP, including the list of CIP projects to undergo a community and environmental assessment pro. Well, there's a, is it?
Processes misspelled. We can correct that. Continue.
Okay, process C as identified in the staff memorandum period regarding the Alpine Balsam CIP. And then do I really need to read the rest of it? Um, uh, what, as noted, the, the, the two lines there. Planning Board recommends approval for CIP years 2023 and 2024, but reserves their recommendation for years and expenditures beyond 2024. And there needs to be a space after the comma at the end of 2024.
Um, and then that, that word processes under community environmental assessment processes should just be process singular. A process. Thank you.
Sorry, having mouse issues.
We've all been there.
I will second that.
Who's seconded that?
Okay, can I, uh, can I offer a friendly?
Yes, go ahead.
And that is, uh, to keep, to keep the suggested motion as is, but in the final sentence to add before Alpine Balsam regarding, uh, I'd like to add CU South and Alpine Balsam uh, for the, uh, uh, you know, to be, that they be treated in the same way regarding future, uh, recommendations for future funding.
As the motion maker, I'm going to, uh, not accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Too bad. All right.
This might second stand, or do you need me to restate it, Hella?
It, I, I have a question. Um, and maybe I frame this in a friendly too. My question is, by, by adopting this motion, we're, we're covering everything above. I guess I would like to put out there the idea that life safety, we're asking, you know, what priorities we're concerned about. And from my perspective, I'm concerned about prioritizing projects that are, um, relevant to life safety. So is this motion covering everything? And if it is, I'd like to make a friendly to put that in as well. And I can, I can elaborate on that. But I just point of clarification to Hella.
Well, right now, it doesn't. Right now, it doesn't address what you said, uh, Georgie. I think that could be done in a separate motion as well.
Okay, all right. Then I'll, then I'll leave it as is and, 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 um, put it in a separate motion.
Okay. So, uh, I think it's time to call a vote then, which we probably need to do, uh, by roll call. So I'll, I'll go through the list here. Laura?
I.
Mark?
I.
Lisa?
Hi.
George?
I.
Sarah? Are you muted, Sarah, or?
I said.
If you hold up your thumb. Oh, okay. Okay. And, uh, let's see. Oh, ML?
Hi.
And I vote aye. Okay, so George, you had a, another, uh, motion.
I have one as well. If George would like some time to work on his.
Uh, yeah, go, go ahead, Laura. I'll, I'll type mine up while you have yours. If you've got yours handy.
Okay.
Everyone's.
I do have it. Would you like me to send it to Amanda or should I share my screen?
I think, uh, Amanda should probably get it.
Okay, I will then send it to Amanda right now. Sorry, I gotta find my email. Okay, it's, it's on its way.
Okay, do you want to, well, one, oh, here it is now.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just pulling it up now.
Amanda, can you make that bigger so folks can see it?
Oh, sorry. I meant to actually, um, copy and paste it onto my Word document.
Ah, gotcha. Okay. It's kind of long and I apologize. I'm open to cutting this down if it's too much. But I tried to capture the conversation that we had. I did add one thing, uh, based on, I'll just tell you what I added and then I'll read it. So the thing that I added that we did not talk about was, you know, based on John's mention of the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan, one of the elements of the outreach for that plan that was, uh, really pioneering within the city um, and really helpful was the bilingual outreach, which I think should also apply to this airport municipal, um, municipal airport master planning process, given that some of the communities that live near there uh, are primarily Spanish speaking or, you know, as a first language. So I did add that. Okay, here's the, here's what I would move. Should I just go ahead and make the motion or do you want to talk about it first? I can read it out as a motion or I can just read it out first. Let me just read it first.
Why don't you read it out first?
Okay, this is the language I would move, but have not yet moved. Regarding the scope and scheduling of the Boulder Municipal Airport Master Plan, the planning board recommends that staff conduct an alternatives analysis and community engagement process equivalent to the level of effort and investment of a SEEP to fulfill provision 6.23 in the 2020 midterm update of the BVCP, which reads, quote, "At the time of the next airport master plan, the city will work with the community to reassess the potential for developing a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood serving uses," end quote. Alternative scenarios in the analysis should include, one, trend scenario, including planned growth of airport services. Two, shrinking the airport's physical footprint to the minimum required to maintain emergency uses as the major or sole aviation use of the airport. And three, one or two additional scenarios defined by staff with community input that land in between the two scenarios previously described. The alternatives analysis should be sequenced logically and cost effectively with a separately funded FAA master plan, taking into consideration the possibility that any of the described alternatives may be selected. Components of the alternatives analysis and associated community engagement should include, one, bilingual outreach such as was conducted in the East Boulder Subcommunity Planning Process. Two, robust application of the city's racial equity instrument. And three, an analysis of the climate change impacts of each of the alternatives. So I think this is consistent with Lisa's, uh, thought that we're describing a process that we want the city to go through and the kinds of things we want them to look at, but we are not assuming the outcome.
Okay. Do we have any seconds?
Oh, any, any discussion? Yeah. Do we want discussion first?
So, so Laura, I really appreciate the effort and time you put into this. And I would suggest that perhaps we just end it after, uh, equivalent to the level and of effort and investment of a SEEP to fulfill provisions to, uh, 6.23 in the 2020 midterm update of the BVCP. Um, because all the rest is you is, is you, you're, you're trying to create a process when, without having staff review what you are proposing. And I think that's quite problematic. Um, in the same way, you know, a proposal that was made a couple of weeks ago that there had been no hearings about, no staff analysis of, et cetera, et cetera. And I think you're making the point you mean to make, which is alternative analysis within this, that has the framework of a SEEP. And I think the rest of it is, is a little too, you're, you're trying to be quite open, but it's actually pretty constricting. Um, that would be my recommendation to you.
Um, I, I agree with that. Um, I find, I, I, I like what you were trying to do and the thoroughness of it, which is something I think you're really strong at, Laura, but I find it too prescriptive um, to staff. And I just don't know, especially at this hour, like I, I, I don't like making it that prescriptive. I'm comfortable with, um, where you were talking about maybe putting the period, Sarah, if that were a friendly that, um, Laura would consider, um, but, but everything else that just kind of really tried, I, I appreciate the attention to detail in there, but, but in this case, I would prefer not to include that attention to detail. Um, and would be comfortable with it with a shorter motion.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Uh, I, I, I feel, I feel the same way, um, because I think overall I, I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish here. And I think by doing that, it does that, it makes it easier to accept and have staff come back, um, with how they would run the process.
And I would add, um, Laura and for staff, that, that there is no, at, at this moment in time, it's not so much that any particular component of what you've written below is something that I have concerns or, or problems with. Like, I, I don't want it to be a criticism of the language that is there, um, but rather just the overall prescriptiveness of it. Um, and the attempt to really closely define it, uh, that's what I'm uncomfortable with. Um, but I think for staff, um, and feedback for you, I think there's a lot of really good stuff in here. So I would encourage staff to screenshot this or otherwise capture it because there's good stuff that we're going to want to talk to you about. Um, but I, I just, I don't think it needs to be contained in the motion language.
Okay. Any other thoughts? I'm, I'm looking to see if there's any other hands up. None. I have to say that, uh, I, I agree with the comments, uh, Laura, that, that Lisa and Sarah and George came, made. I think it'd be more effective to, to make it shorter.
Um, I am okay with that, with the understanding that, you know, what I wrote here, these are things that I really am going to be looking for. Like, I want to make sure that this analysis is not just let's look at dedicating enough land to have two condos, you know? I want it to be a robust analysis. I do want it to be bilingual. I do want the city's racial equity instrument to actually be used for this significant decision. And I do think that a climate change, um, impact analysis for something as significant as the airport, you know, we, we spent, how much time do we spend, um, thinking about ways to reduce the city's uh, greenhouse gas emissions and climate change? And I don't have a good sense of how the airport figures into that. Um, I do, I have read quite a bit about how, uh, you know, um, airports and airplanes are a huge contributor to greenhouse gases, and that one of the most effective things you can do as an individual to reduce your footprint is to fly less. But I haven't, you know, that's something that you read in a pop, pop science article. It's not something I've seen an analysis of. So I would love to see, see that be considered, um, in a decision as significant as do we maintain this airport in a significant way? Do we grow it? Do we shrink it? Um, so I would like this to be a, some, have significant alternatives, significantly different alternatives and really robust community outreach. So all that said, I'm okay with shortening the motion and just sending this language to staff as, you know, here are things that I will be looking for, and hopefully my fellow planning board members also will be looking for them uh, when they come back with their proposed master plan process. So, um, I'll stop there.
Okay. So.
So, uh, if we were going to do that, then, uh, I think you deleted a little too much, Amanda. Could you undo that? Um, you want to end it after the quotation marks that cite what was in that provision 6.23. You can delete that part and I will send it to staff separately. Okay, so this would be the motion and it would end after describing what that 6.23 provision was.
Mark, I see you have your hand up there.
Yeah, I was just, I'm, I would go to second the motion if, if no one else, if anyone else wanted to, go ahead.
I think I have to read it out and actually make the motion.
Okay.
Are, are we ready for that?
Can I ask a question that's probably a really simplistic question reflective of where my brain's functioning is at right now? Um, does this as written state or imply that we're saying we want it redeveloped? Because I'm not comfortable saying I want it redeveloped. I'm, I'm cool with having a plan to look into redeveloping.
Uh, so, so I think that what it says is that we are recommending an alternatives analysis and community engagement project or process to look into this provision in the, um, BVCP that says that the city will reassess the potential to do this redevelopment.
Should fulfill have another L?
I, I wondered that too, and I, I think it just has one L. I looked it up. You can Google it.
Okay. Mark, are you, your hand is up. Are you? Okay, gone. All right. I think it's time to call a vote. We have.
I have to, I have to read the motion. It has to be seconded officially. Okay, I move regarding the scope and scheduling of the Boulder Municipal Airport Master Plan. The planning board recommends that staff conduct an alternatives analysis and community engagement process equivalent to the level of effort and investment of a SEEP to fulfill provision 6.23 in the 2020 midterm update of the BVCP, which reads, quote, "At the time of the next airport master plan, the city will work with the community to reassess the potential for developing a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood serving uses," end quote.
Okay. And Mark, you've seconded.
Yes, I second that motion.
Okay. All right. I think we'll do a, a roll call vote on this. Mark?
Yes.
Lisa?
Hi.
Laura?
I.
George?
I.
ML?
I.
Sarah?
Hi.
And I vote I too. So, we have adopted that unanimously. All right, are there any other? Additions or oceans or thoughts on this topic that you would like to make known? George?
Yes, um, hopefully I can just read this and and you can just write it off. Um, I'd like to make a motion around prioritization of um. Life safety projects. So, uh, the way I would read it off would be. The Planning Board recommends to the city manager and city council. That should projects need to be prioritized in the CIP to address any unforeseen resource constraints.
George, you might need to slow down so that Amanda can keep up. So the planning board recommends the city manager and city council that.
That should projects. Need to be prioritized. From the approved CIP. To address any unforeseen resource constraints. At projects that address community life safety be.
Hang on one second. She's fast, but but you're a little faster. You're great.
So I'm glad. Check in Laura.
My hands aren't working very well.
Address any unforeseen resource constraints.
At projects that address community life safety. Be prioritized over others first. And I'm open to edits.
Be prioritized. I think you can just end it at be prioritized.
That's fine.
And Amanda, um, when you're done with that. I think that uh, in the last line there, the word at should be that. I think it was just a misheard. It should be that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can you? Can you let us know what? What you're thinking here? I mean, beyond the obvious.
You know, um, what I'm thinking specifically, uh, my 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 specific concerns given. My experience with the city is, um. The fire station, right? As as the sort of poster child for this. We are, we are woefully, I mean, we are so ill equipped right now, and that fire station could not be built fast enough. I also think there are flood mitigation efforts in here that should also be prioritized. Um, and so I'm thinking of community life safety as projects that affect those people uh in harms way. As, you know, if we hit resource constraints like we have over the past few years. That there's consideration made at that time to make sure that. You know, as we talked at late ad nauseam about Alpine Balsam. At the end of the day, the office building can wait another year if it's a choice between that and the fire station. Um, so that's what I'm trying to get to.
All right, thank you.
And I'll be happy to second that, George.
All right.
I know it's not a motion yet, or is it a motion yet?
I think it is a motion.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it being a motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Um, I I think. I I would like to leave a little bit of room in there, you know, sometimes. You incur quite a lot of cost by stalling one thing in favor of another. So this feels a little bit black and white. I think I probably would say something like. That that projects that address community life safety be given highest consideration or something like that, rather than be prioritized. Um, because it it there may be a decision where it doesn't make sense to move the fire station forward. If it's going to cost you twenty million dollars. I I don't know. I'm just imagining that there might be a situation where it doesn't. Make financial sense or, you know. You you you're leaving a project open to rain and snow because you're reprioritizing your funds, or I I don't even know what could happen, but it just feels a little too hard and fast for me. I don't know what you think about that, George.
I I think I'm okay with that. So so can you position that as a friendly? So.
Uh, yeah, I would, as as a friendly amendment, I would change the last line to say, um, be given highest. Be given highest consideration rather than be prioritized.
I'm I'm okay with that.
Okay. We have a friendly that's been accepted. Any other discussion?
I just want to ask, should should we also be more specific in there and say? Projects that address community life safety such as the fire station and flood system improvements. Do we need to go that level of specificity, or do you prefer to leave it more broad?
I I prefer to leave it more broad just for interpretation. Um, that way there can be a robust discussion around it to your point, like, you know. I think, yeah.
Okay.
Discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. Roll call, George?
I.
Lisa?
I.
Laura?
I.
ML?
I.
Sarah?
Hi.
Mark?
I.
And I vote I. So unanimously adopted. Okay. So. Any other? Discussion or uh recommendations that you'd like to see? I have uh, one that we talked about at the beginning of our. Discussion tonight, but that I don't, I'm not sure it's been fully. Clarified in in what we've adopted tonight, and that is the request to provide. Uh, full information, full available information on the overall project size. To provide context at the same time we're dealing with the annual budget allocations. Do you folks feel that uh? That that is still valid or? Or that it has been addressed in what we've dealt with so far? George, I see your hand is up.
Sorry, it was it was left up.
Okay. I mean, we, this was a a topic we've talked about, both with respect to Alpine Balsam and and CU South and so on. But we, but in our recommendations, we haven't really made it clear that the this is something that we regard as important. So I'm trying to get a feel for. How folks think about that. Brad, uh.
Yeah, if maybe I could think into administrative uh suggestion, because I I guess I could frame this, uh. I I I could see you framing it as very specific kind of formal. Uh, recommendation or request of staff, I think, um. Maybe more operationally. Um, as as chair, we can speak with you, John, uh, about uh, work program and um. And board topic priorities. And maybe just frame it in the calendar uh that up for the next, you know, three months, six months, nine months, twelve months. As items and and a strategy for how to identify which. Projects are of the scale and scope of interest to the um, to the board members.
Well, I I would be satisfied with that, and if the rest of the board. Is satisfied with that approach, then we can let it be. Any thoughts?
Uh, I I I do, I'm 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 good with that. It sounds like um, you guys heard sort of loud and clear. The the thought process, and I think as you go through that, it's probably probably better to be a a a two way conversation on how that gets framed. So that we don't create, you know, burdening work process, but we get the answers that we need for the bigger projects. Thank you.
Okay. Well, well, if, oh, Laura.
I just want to check in with staff, you know, given the um, recommendation that this board just passed about um, doing. The equivalent of a SEEP process for the Boulder Municipal Airport. Do you have the funding that you need to do that? Or do you need to adjust the funding request for the master plan process?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that on the uh, spot, uh, board member Kephalin. I think. It the context, of course, is that you have made a recommendation to council. That uh, staff conduct an analysis and of course, so in the context of. Their deliberation about budgeting for staff resources and such. Uh, I would anticipate that to be part of it. Uh, I don't know if Mark is still. On the, yeah, Mark Wolf is still. Uh, on and could speak to that point too.
Yeah, I think to your Brad, we'll we'll get with um, staff involved and uh, look at existing budget and determine. The scale so that if council does entertain to um, add. Some similar language, we can be prepared, um, whether or not the existing budget is adequate or not. So. We'll need a little time to go back and just make sure that we have that um, correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm I'm hoping that given that one of the questions that was asked of planning board is. Do we have any recommendations about projects that should undergo a SEEP that there, you know? There there has been some provision made in the budget that there might be an additional project or two added, so. Um, hopefully that's a go, but we look forward to hearing from you. Um, if you have what you need, because I would be completely supportive of increasing your budget request uh, to enable you to do this.
And maybe a follow up question to that to Chris. Chris, um, I mentioned the format of our report to staff does cover those key items and. You would list that under the second, that that didn't meet, that came across as a leading question. I didn't mean for it to be.
Yes, it will.
Okay, Mark?
Oh, is is this the time that if we were, are we done making motions and we're just providing feedback on on the seat? For staff to note and record is 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 now an appropriate time?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh. I have a couple of things I just, I I want to point out, and I think, um, the first one is. The CIP speaks of. Things like the separated bike lanes on at on thirtieth street. And they're cited as an example of how the CIP is fulfilling. Um, master plans and uh Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Goals, et cetera. And I want to point out that at thirtieth and Pearl. Where on the west side of the street, we have the Google campus. On the east side of the street, we have thirty Pearl. North of Pearl on the east side, we have the other development whose name escapes me. Um. All of these developments are being done, the streets are being modified. And they are not taking into account longer range T M P plans and goals. And we will, at some point, I hope in the near future. Rip it up again and modify the street scape. Uh, in spite of what has just been done for those developments. So. And 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 this came up uh, at our last meeting when I. Ask about the separated bike lanes that are noted in the T M P. Next, uh fifty fifth and central, next to the uh development that was asking for the extension. So I simply ask that. As as staff goes forward with major projects. That we check in and really take into account. Um, our master plans and how uh, how we can use. These developments and infrastructure improvements to be sure and incorporate. Um, our T M P goals and in fact designations in in some places. So. Um, that's that's my, that's my one comment. The other one is last uh, last meeting. We spent some time at approving the wastewater and stormwater master plan and I. Um, pointed out my concern with the lack of uh. Points of point of responsibility for greenways. And I know um, that. Without a point of responsibility or really an advocate, we have a. Uh, a a five, a six year, five, six year CIP. Upwards of many ten hundreds of millions of dollars without a single project for designated for users of greenways. We have flood mitigation projects that incorporate greenways. But we have, we we do not actually have a single project. That that incorporates that to the benefit of the users of of greenlights and. Um, it to me, it's a, it's a, it's another point of. Uh, they are a neglected asset, and when I look at five hundred thousand dollars for a mall refresh. And again, to me, greenways are just as important as our mall. Um, it it's a, it's a glaring omission for me. Um, so those are my, those are my comments. I have a a couple niggling ones uh for O S M P, but. I'm I'm gonna drop them now. Those are my two main comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we have concluded. Our review of uh, the CIP. Unless anyone else has final comments, we can move on to matters. Seeing none, I think we'll move on. So matters from staff.
Well, I want to give a huge thank you to Chris for uh, what is really represents an incredible amount of work. Uh, by him and and really by extension, all of the staff. Uh, throughout this city, you saw great representation tonight. Thank you to all of them for being here and. Being accessible to you for questions and clarifications. And and Chris being the master wrangler of all that. So, uh, thank you, Chris, for doing that. And and doing such a great job. Um, one thing I do want to mention also about the CIP, just as a new person coming in is I. Was very appreciative to find out how the city of Boulder values. Tying the CIP in a very direct and tangible and um. And and specifically to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. I I can tell you not all jurisdictions do that, and it really, um, for me is a disconnect when that happens. Because uh, the master plan. Comprehensive plan really speaks to the vision of the community as uh represented through a very comprehensive and inclusive. Uh, process, as you all know, having been involved in that and having that tied very specifically. To the decision process of the CIP, I think it's just representative of the city's values in a in a way that's. Uh, very impressive to me as somebody walking into that. And similarly, the um. Uh, representation or I'm sorry, the um, tie in to. What is really outcome based. Uh, budgeting as well, the other philosophy, so. Just just very excited to be able to join a a group that thinks in those terms philosophically. A couple other items I wanted to to share with the board. Uh, number one, I. Apologize that I've not individually connected with all of you, uh, many of you, but not all, and 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 know that that's still coming and and look forward to those conversations. As part of the broader effort at uh, connections with the community, I'm. Also meeting with some of the groups out in the community such as chamber representatives and. Community cycles and those types of groups, um, as well as individual citizens and and just really. Appreciate the uh, community reaching out to me and and seeking both an opportunity to share their opinions, but also for me to kind of pick their brains and understand. Uh, better the history and um, multiple perspectives. Like again, to that inclusion value, multiple uh, opinions um, from members in the community. Uh, we are working hard at an item that I know came up uh, during the last meeting. Uh, indirectly about our service standard, uh, we're working hard to fill our staffing gaps. Uh, we have had some notable successes and and other ones we're still working hard at. Uh, but do know that that remains a priority of the department. Uh, related to that is ongoing efforts at increasing our processing uh, improvements. Uh, we do actually have citywide in the in the um. Organization staff coming back into offices again, uh, across the organization. Minimum two days a week, uh, starting next week. So really moving into more of a. Recognition of the COVID crisis being pandemic. Recognition of the COVID crisis being pandemic. Uh, or endemic rather than a pandemic uh, situation. And um, expecting this to be the uh, permanent situation moving forward. Uh, the city had already anticipated prior to COVID moving towards a hybrid. Uh, situation. Obviously, things changed dramatically with COVID, but now we're moving towards more of a. A vision that had been laid out uh, at that time and, and into a permanent state. Um, so that certainly will change the dynamics of our interaction with the public as well. Um, speaking to some of those process items, uh, we do have a newly. Uh, reformed how to connect with planning. As a central website. Um, just working to again refine our ways that. Uh, people inquire and uh, provide input. And uh, submit applications to the department. Uh, for planning and building and the other types of functions we provide. So just a few updates for you. I'm happy to answer any questions as always. Uh, but that concludes my report uh, for this period, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um. I have, uh, I, I just see, uh, I have one matter to bring up before somebody disappears. I see a. Mister Christopher Johnson is uh, still attending, and I got an email from him today. In response to my inquiry about Prairie Dog uh, relocation. And uh. Thanks a million for, for your response. I, I have to say, I appreciated that a lot. But I gotta, I wanted to let the rest of the board know also. Uh, I think they have also been copied that uh, letter, but uh. I, I wanted to inquire, I was, I was really surprised because. The location, proposed location of prairie dogs at Rocky Flats. Seems to me to counter the. The millions of dollars that were spent to, to bury a lot of the radioactive. Waste and elements there, and I'm just wondering if someone's thinking about the. Safety of having prairie dogs burrowing around in, in. In the area where so much effort has been put into covering it up.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I will give the credit to um, to Val Matheson, who's our, our lead um, ecological stewardship project manager who, who. Prepared that response um, to you and. You know, I, I can't comment directly necessarily on um, the, you know. The uh, environmental, um, you know, contamination in the location, or whether or not. The particular relocation site, you know, would have any consideration associated with that. Um, you know, ultimately, and, and from the conversations I had with Val and um, understanding our process. Those relocation permits are, are essentially administered through a state evaluation process and, and really our, our staff in the city of Boulder has no. Um, no influence or really ability to um, you know, to participate as part of that decision-making when it's a relocation from. Private land to another location. If it was city of Boulder land, then of course that would be different. Um, but when it's coming from private property. And being relocated elsewhere, um, then you know, that goes, as I, as I mentioned, it goes through a state of Colorado um, uh, uh, process, and so. You know, we'd have to take up that question, I think, with, with others and um, you know, inquire about that deeper, but um. What, you know, the response that I sent earlier today, um, you know, provides the information that, that I have uh, on my end and, and certainly something we can continue to look into.
Well, thank you. I, it was a, a very good and clear letter, and I understand that it's. The state and federal government that, that makes that decision. I. But given that Boulder is right next to Rocky Flats, we should be interested in. In preserving the. The uh, all the work that's been done to make us safe. Anyways, I just, I just wanted to bring it up to, to thank you for that.
Sean, if I, if I can just add on to that. There are keystone species who are now going to be burrowing into radioactive areas. And. Then eaten by all kinds of other wildlife. Um, so. I, I realize I read the letter and I know that the city says it's not our job, but. I, I would suggest that um, there's, there's re-good reason to reach out to folks at the state level and um. Call this decision into question. It's a really. Uh, it's, it's a. Wildly bad choice by the state.
Yeah, I just, I just wonder if they've considered it properly, so. Anyway, thank you. For your response, yeah. Um, there's a, something else I, I also wanted to mention to the board actually, and that is something. Uh, relatively flattering that was said uh. The. Two, two or three sessions ago, I, I showed up at the city council meeting where they considered the. Uh, the uh, planning board's uh, decision about the uh, Raising Cane Restaurant. Um, and in that meeting, which they decided not to call up that case. They were very uh, positive and. And happy about the functioning of the board. Uh, in general, so I promised that I would pass that message on to you and. And congratulate you on that. And then uh, beyond that, we still have to sort out our retreat, which has been going on for a long time now. Uh, the discussion. So I, I think Amanda has some, some news for us.
That's Sean. Um, it looks like everyone's available. Well, I mean, we talked about this at the last meeting, but we agreed on October third. Um, and I know that George was not quite sure yet just because of, it's far out for work schedule, but. Um, I just wanted to try to land on a time with everyone. Um, thank you. I did see that you all filled out the one is good. Poll, um. I just had a question about the one o'clock hour. Um. It looks like on the poll, Sarah and John. Said they couldn't make it at one o'clock, but you are available at. Like twelve and two. I don't know if that was just a misclick or.
Well, I.
We have the planning board agenda meeting.
Yeah, it's.
That's right. Oh, shoot, sorry.
Snarling.
Maybe we can, maybe we can move that um, to make. The retreat or just talk about that um, next meeting.
If you and Sarah and Charles agree, then we'll just.
Okay.
The agenda meeting.
Okay. Um, so I'm thinking about like eleven to three o'clock-ish based off of everyone's poll and. Available times. And I know that um, let's see.
If um, if it's possible to do like ten thirty to two thirty, that would be slightly better for me, but I think Sarah had a, was gonna chime in as well.
Yep. Middle of the day, super challenging work.
I know.
Um, so. Just FYI. We want, we need to have a meeting, so I will be okay with whatever you choose, but middle of the day, super challenging.
I, I mean, yeah, I can move it either direction. I just, it, it just depends on, on all of you and the times that you can attend. The majority can attend.
Like I said, I'll do whatever the majority can do, but.
Okay.
Okay, well. We'll plan on um, October third then, and we'll formalize it and um. Send it out and try, try to shoot for. Uh, Lisa, you just said ten thirty. I don't know if.
That, that's because my.
For others.
My kiddo's out of school at three o'clock in Lafayette. So either I or someone else will need to pick him up. Um, possibly I can find someone else to do it, or I can just leave early. But if the meeting were to end at two thirty, that would solve the problem for me, but perhaps create problems for other people. So.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Great. Well, we'll finalize that. Um. And then I just let you know that I will send out a. Um, packet for next week's meeting uh, early tomorrow morning. I didn't want to send it to you right before this meeting. Because you wouldn't have had time to look at it anyway. And there's just one item for next week, so.
Okay. All right, any other matters from any board member? All right. I think we're done. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Let's adjourn, let's adjourn this meeting then. Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening.